...15th, 2015, meeting of the City Council's called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2, on a closed caption for hearing-impaired viewers. Closed captioning this month is sponsored by the Downtown Las Vegas Alliance. Please note customers of CenturyLink may view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002, and some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.lasvegasnevada.gov. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV, Channel 2 and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-spray-and-sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exit to the back of the chambers out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with the marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available speaker card, which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online, the clerk's office or the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone's present today who is need for hearing impaired equipment, please come forward to our city clerk for assistance. If you parked in the parking garage and did not receive a validation ticket as you entered chambers, please exit to your right and then see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we... Oh, thank you. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for invocation this morning given by Scott Carter, and remain standing for the pledge?
Our Father who art in heaven, we come before thee this morning very humbly, expressing our gratitude to live in this free country, for the opportunity we have as citizens to choose our governing officials, especially at this time as our legislative session is moving forward. Ask a special blessing upon those elected officials, that they will have discernment, that they will be aware of the laws that they are writing, and the existing laws that they are changing, that they will work in the best interest of our state. Grateful for the women and men of our armed forces, who are volunteering their time and putting themselves in harm's way for our safety. Bless them, and bless their families. We ask a special blessing upon this city council, as they work today. Bless them with the gift of discernment, that their decisions will also be in the best interest of our community, and ask thee to help us as citizens to be more sensitive to what is right and what is wrong, and have the courage to choose the right, to obey, honor, and sustain thy laws and the laws of this country. In this we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we'll now proceed with the ceremonial portion of the agenda.
He's here.
Thank you.
He's in the back room.
Okay, we'll proceed anyway. Well, actually, we'll wait a second if you don't mind. Sort of significant... Okay, we'll proceed. Before we begin with the ceremonial portion of the agenda, I'd like to speak to remembering two wonderful community members who we recently lost, as you well know. Gary Gray, who lost his life in a car accident last week at Kyle Canyon on Mount Charleston, made his indelible mark first as a teacher, then as a longtime fixture in Nevada politics. A man of true passion and function, his advice spurred many a candidate to political victory. He shared his life with his wife of 28 years, County Commissioner Chris June Kiliani, and together they traveled the world, visiting more than 135 countries on all seven continents. Our thoughts and prayers are with Chris and her family at this tragic, sudden loss. Also, very sadly, we felt the passing of one of our own, of Tuesday James, a former Assistant Two and community liaison for Councilman Steve Ross. Tuesday fought a hard battle with leukemia, but was always a ray of sunshine and happiness at City Hall. A breeder of champion-lined Great Danes with her husband Hadley, before she passed away, she did see her prized Great Dane, Nico, win the working dog category at the Westminster Dog Show in New York City. This is indeed a very sad time for us. She was a beautiful, and warm, and young woman. And so, at this time, with a moment of silence as well, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor, and I think a couple of us on this dais have experienced the life of Gary Gray, certainly my mentor, and I am one of those candidates that he successfully led. It is a sad day, certainly, as we remember Tuesday James, who served me for nine years and has served this community in other capacities. And with that, if you will indulge me, Josh McCackren will play amazing grace in recognition of both of these fine members of our community. Thank you, Mayor.
This ceremonial portion of our agenda, and for the first item, I would like to invite our Building Safety Director, Chris Knight, to join us at the podium, please. Our employees strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which stand for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now. They build our community to make life better, and I'm proud to announce that the Employee of the Month is Lauren Storla. Laura, please come on down and join us here at the podium. No, 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 no. You have to come forward so everybody can appreciate you and see you. Lauren's been with the city since 2000 and is one of our Building and Safety permit technicians. He is someone who truly appreciated not only by the public he serves, but also by his coworkers. Lauren's a leader who steps in to help without being asked, and ensures the customer service is always a top priority at Building and Safety. The safety of our city structures is not something we take lightly at the city. Our staff works hard to ensure that buildings in our community meet all safety requirements and will not be hazardous for our residents, and our business owners, and our visitors. The important process of inspecting buildings can sometimes be stressful, laborious, and definitely time-consuming, when builders have a construction schedule to meet. Lauren does a fantastic job of being perceptive and watching the customer service flow, to make sure that the city is providing the best service possible to the building community. Knowledgeable, confident, and willing to help, and always friendly, Lauren is a credit to the department and to our city. I want to present Lauren with this award, and also point to his left here, where he will see a street sign with his name on it that's posted out front of City Hall. We'd love to hear a few words from you, Lauren, if you don't mind, but I think I'm going to ask Chris first. But congratulations, and let me, if I may, thank you very much, our Employee of the Month, Lauren Storla, who has exhibited outstanding performance through achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, ownership, and is engaged now and has exhibited assistance to his fellow employees, department, and the citizens of this great city. Congratulations to you. Okay, Mr. Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. As a result of the recession, I've had a long history with Lauren. I've fired him, and I've hired him. And I can tell you, and fired him, and then hired him, yeah. And I could tell you through the whole ordeal, Lauren has never been anything but a gentleman and a model employee. He is a great guy, and a very great man, and I really do appreciate him being a part of the Building and Safety Department. We have worked in the Building and Safety Department for a long time to have a culture of seeking the yes answer first. Lauren never had to be taught how to get to that culture, because he's had it his entire career, and he's a model employee for the Building Department. When we need something done, and we're not quite sure who to give it to, we just give it to Lauren. And he's a shining example for all of our employees, and we have a great set of employees, which says an awful lot about Lauren. To be picked out amongst such a high-quality and high-profile set of employees out there, any one of them could be Employee of the Month, and we're very proud of Lauren, and we're very proud of his accomplishments, his work ethic, and the kind of person that he is, and how he represents our department.
How many of you, could they stand from your department, would like to see them?
Certainly. You bet. Could all of you from the department stand?
Okay, your turn. Twice fired, huh? Amazing. And still smiling.
Mayor, council members, thank you very much. Chris, you're too kind for everything you've said. You know, some of the times, we've had some quite a few discussions, good and bad, you know, about employees and how things should work. You know, he gave me the opportunity to be a part of a lot of these people. We developed the engagement team for Building and Safety, and which offered quite a few challenges, which Chris has met. But I also want to say thanks to the gentlemen that I see up there that are part of Park Enforcement. One of the opportunities, that I should say, that I had, was I got a chance to go to work for Park Enforcement. That's one of the places I went to when I was fired.
Councilman Coffin asked that it be corrected to being riffed.
Riffed. I, you know, and I couldn't agree more, and honestly, and I had a chance to talk to Betsy about this too, you know, and I wasn't going to bring it up, but honestly, when we had the reduction in force, and, you know, this is one of the things I told Betsy when it happened to me the first time, when I came back, the first time. I used to be an inspector, then I started as a permit tech. I used to be an inspector, then I went to permit tech. Then I went to Park Enforcement, then I came back to permit tech, then I went back to Park Enforcement, then I got back to permit tech. I'm still working on the inspector bit again, but, again, one of the points that I wanted to make is, in each department, I've had a chance to meet some really great people, and any one of these people can be Employee of the Month and should be. I mean, honestly, they do so much more work than I do. One thing I want to mention, this, it was put to me once that this was a popularity contest, you know, winning an award like this, and I agreed to a point, and then I said, "Wait a second. Why are you popular? Why does that person get picked for one reason or another?" And it's because anybody within, that comes to the Building and Safety Department, or, you know, or when they have to deal with each other, they go to particular people because those people will help them time and time again, and every one of these people are those people that'll help them and go time and, you know, just spend that extra effort. And there's so many people that are like that, in Park Enforcement as well as this, and, you know, and I want to tell you, I really appreciate the opportunity to go to Park Enforcement, because I could have been fired, really fired, and I wasn't.
Is that, but, you know, the beauty of it is, it's really, it is public service, and that's why this city shines, because of how each individual honors the word of service. We're not here for any other reason, but to do the best we can, one person at a time, so that the whole, and we appreciate every single one of you, every one of you. And so, it's too bad you can't hold your job. Let's go get a picture over here. We're so proud. Okay, for our next item, I'd like to invite our Senior Citizen Advisory Board Chair, Mary Ellen Heist, to join us at the podium to present the senior of the quarter recognition. Hi, Mary Ellen. Hugs, hugs, kisses. Keep going, you've got three more guys here.
All right, we're rolling.
Thank heavens you don't have the flu.
No, never. I would never kiss anybody sick.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Mayor Goodman, City Council, city staff, and all the guests in the audience. It is with great pleasure today that we're going to bring a very, very special lady up to the podium. Lila McLendon, would you please come up with our member of our board for Andrew? Thank you, if you could help her, that would be great.
We're going to sing happy birthday.
Oh, yeah, we will, definitely. Come here, Lila. Ooh, yeah, we don't want anybody down, we don't need an accident today. No. The Las Vegas Senior Citizen Advisory Board works very hard in the community to try to see who we can get to get a recognition. Well, this time, I think we've hit the 100 zone, and they literally, this lovely lady is the third child in a family of 11, and the first daughter. So obviously, this lady has been a mother of all of her life and taken on a lot of responsibilities. One of her proudest moments was at the age of seven, when she made a dress for her mother. At the age of 17, Lila's mom passed, and she became the mother figure to the younger siblings, only one which is still living today. Lila married later on in life, had another two children, added to her siblings of her brothers and sisters, and lived a life of love with her family. Now we'll get into her volunteering. She has volunteered at the Dula Center of Seniors, the East Las Vegas Community Center. She's an Eastern Star member. She worked with Catholic charities together with a bunch of folks, and delivered holiday packages to our military families at Nellis Air Force Base. She has lived through World War I, World War II, the Korean War, Vietnam War, Cold War, Gulf War. Her philosophy in life is to see good and beauty in all fellow human beings. She believes that a beautiful day is a good friend, and kindness is more gracious than anything else in the world. This is her wealth. Our board is honored to recognize this lady, and anybody can guess what tomorrow's going to be? 100 years old.
Wow.
I think we need to sing.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Lila. Happy birthday to you.
Oh, I don't have a lot to say, but it's a beautiful day, and thank you all for having me here. Thank you so very much. Yes, let's get over a little to the left here, if we could, and so, yeah, away from the podium, if we can, and we'll go right over here. So beautiful. You are simply magnificent, wonderful. Pays to be a good person. Okay, we're going to have a picture taken. Can we come in, Councilman Beers, and Councilman Ross?
You can see over my head.
I'll have to make it to 100.
And as beautifully, unbelievably, as beautifully as she is, oh my, we're just so honored.
Well, I'm so honored. Never expected to do this.
Wonderful. Happy birthday to you. Great. Thanks, Mary Ellen. Beautiful. See, doing nicely towards everyone. This is an example, you live a long, healthy life. Beautiful. Okay, for our next item, I'd like to invite some representatives of our amazing public safety providers to join us here at the podium, please. We have Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department Assistant, excuse me, Chief Pat Neville. Neville, excuse me. Coming on down. And our very own Detention and Enforcement Chief, Michelle Freeman. Where are you, Michelle? Coming. And our Las Vegas Fire and Rescue Chief, Willie McDonald. Everybody's here? Oh, and we have also, we have dispatchers who are present, so please, you can come on down. Where are our dispatchers also? We've got them, we've got them. Oh, you did choose well. Let me start here at the end with my favorite guys, that continue to continue, and you get special. Thank you, and, thank you. Lovely, and my dear lady, thank you, congratulations. Ah, and here they are, this is our team here. Boots on the ground, yes? Wonderful. Look at the smiles. We're not going to let you go. You're the best. Thank you. So come on forward, come on, the water's very warm here. Come on. Nice, nice. What a great group. Okay, April 13th through the 19th is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, honoring our amazing 9/11 dispatchers. These fabulous people are literally our community's lifeline. They take emergency calls as they come in and gather as much needed information as possible that helps police and fire personnel as they're being dispatched. It's a stressful environment in which they work, knowing that they are sometimes the only difference between life and death for the person on the other end of the line. Despite that pressure, they come to work every day and provide calm and swift assistance to anyone in need. I know that the men and women responding to the emergency calls could not do their jobs effectively without the assistance of these wonderful dispatchers. So I have three proclamations that I want to give to the Assistant Sheriff and Chiefs recognizing the work of these individuals. So now, let's pass this microphone. We are going to start, we'll start with Metro.
Whoopsie. Okay, come on in.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. This is truly an honor to get up here and just say a few words, and I think the mayor was spot-on with her comments, so I appreciate that. But when people think of first responders, they think of the men and women in uniform that show up to their house, or show up to their fire, that drive the big red trucks, or drive the police cars. But really, it starts with our communications experts. They're the ones that take the call, and as the mayor said, remaining calm, and people who are under stress, they're the ones that successfully get us to that address to help that person in need, whatever that happens to be. They go through the same stress that any police officer or firefighter goes through when they're out there on that scene, and they're very underappreciated. People don't realize that. They see that uniform, that's what they think of. But I appreciate the time and the commitment that the city has put forth to honor these folks and to kind of push them to the forefront. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for this opportunity.
Just look at their faces, you know they're calm. Okay, chief. Why, chief, chief, chief. Tallest chief. Littlest chief. Little chief.
That would be me. Thank you, Mayor and Council, so much. This is a privilege to be standing here today, really, in honor of our communications specialists, and that's what we call them at Detention and Enforcement, we call them communication specialists. They're a little different, they're a little more unique and special to my heart, because they do something a little different than most people think of. They're not just 911 dispatchers, which are invaluable in and of themselves. They do something a little different. Let me explain to you what they do. They open and close the doors for our entire city jail, so they ensure that nobody can get out or in that shouldn't be. They dispatch for three different city departments. They dispatch for the Department of Detention and Enforcement, our deputy city marshals, our corrections officers, and our animal control officers. They also dispatch for the Department of Economic and Urban Development, and they're dispatching for our parking enforcement. In addition to that, they dispatch for Muni Cart, so the Muni Cart marshals are also being dispatched by them. So you can see the uniqueness that they have, that's a little different than what we typically think about when we think about 911. So from the bottom of my heart, I couldn't even ask for a better group of people. This group of people that's standing here today, and the people that are unable to be here, are unbelievably amazing, and I appreciate every single one of you and the hard work, because you are our lifeline from behind the scenes. So thank you so much, and I definitely have to give a shout-out to Lieutenant Thompson, who's standing in the back of the room. He didn't come up here, as I was waving to him, in an imaginary wave, because he's their supervisor as well, and he does an amazing job, and the mayor's waving to you now, Lieutenant Thompson. And the mayor's waving to you now, Lieutenant Thompson. So you really should be down here as well for leading them. Thank you.
I also would like to thank Mayor Goodman and the council for the recognition for our dispatchers, our communications specialists. Our fire alarm office serves Clark County Fire Department, the Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, and North Las Vegas Fire Department, and these folks are incredible in every way, very special. The stress that they're under, not only in terms of trying to help people who are emotional or scared or just having the worst day of their life, but also the expert service and support that they give to our crews out in the field. We've been working them really hard. We don't have enough of them, and I feel like we don't appreciate them as much as we should or show them as much appreciation as we should, and I just wanted to thank the council and the mayor for the recognition, and thank all of our folks for the great work that they do. And I also wanted to thank the council for recognizing Ashanti Gray. It's her birthday today. And she is our senior communications specialist. Thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you, congratulations. And for each of you, on behalf of everyone that serves, I have three proclamations, the last one of which I'm gonna read just a little bit out of it. Okay. And then give it to you. It's from the Office of Mayor and City Council proclamation. "The third week of April 2003 was declared National Public Safety Communications Week by the Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America, whereas the President of the United States of America will issue a proclamation calling upon the people of the United States to observe this week with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas problems of crime, fire, and other disasters touch and affect all segments of our society, and if unabated, can determine and erode both the moral and economic strengths of our community. And whereas these individuals are responsible for responding to telephone calls from the general public for police, fire, and emergency medical assistance, and for dispatching said assistance to help save the lives and properties of our citizens, whereas our public safety communications personnel daily serve the public in countless ways without due recognition by the beneficiaries of this service. Now I therefore, the mayor of the City of Las Vegas, County of Clark, State of Nevada, proudly proclaim, April 13th through the 19th of 2015, National Public Safety Communications Week in your honor." And we thank you very, very much for all that you do. They don't even have circles under their eyes. Goodness. We are so honored and so proud, and so these are for you. We appreciate everything that you do. And the smallest one gets the last one. So thank you. Thank you each and all for what you do. We're so proud. Thank you. Thank you again. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I feel it. I feel it. Wonderful. Thank you. Thanks so much. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
I won't tell. I did ask how old she was. And she is lovely. Anyway, for our next item, Councilman Barlow is going to recognize something special here. It's always something special.
Thank you, Mary. It is something special, because it makes me reflect back when I was four, and my parents took me to this wonderful place that is called the library. And I received my very first library card. So today, in recognition of the National Library Week, I would like to ask that the directors, Director Hezen, if you will please come forward, along with Karen, please come forward, Bramwell. Let's give them a round of applause as they come. Now, see, the other executives, will you all please come forward as well? Come stand. Come forward. Come on. Come on, Fred, you too. Come on forward. Since 1958, National Library Week has been observed to celebrate the contributions of our nation's libraries and to promote library use and support. Our community is richer for the 25 urban and rural branches of our award-winning Las Vegas-Clark County Library District, where I had the opportunity to serve as the chair for a number of years, and we also won Library of the Year. Have we won Library of the Year since I was chairman? No? You've done better? But it was the first time that we had won Library of the Year when I was chair, right? Okay. Thank you so very much for that. The library has historically served as our nation's great equalizer of knowledge. The library levels the playing field by making both print and online information available and accessible to all people. The library provides cultural heritage collections and programs, job-seeking resources, English and second language citizenship classes, and many other creative programs and materials vital to our community. So at this time, before Mr. Hezen, you speak, I would like to at least turn the microphone over to Ms. Karen Bramwell to say a few words, and then we'll turn it back over to the director.
It's Alteron.
It's Alteron?
Oh.
Okay. Well, today is to Karen. And I'll tell you why. Come here, Karen. I'm not, it's no diss to you. Karen taught me a lot of information, shared a lot of information, and she was the one who really led the way and led the charge as to why the library, as I served as chairman, is the way it is today. And so Karen, if you will, just say a few words, and then we'll let Mr. Hezen speak. Thank you. You don't have to talk about me, just talk about the library.
Thank you, Councilman, but I am gonna turn it over to our executive director. I am speaking. You are so mean.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Councilman, thank you so much. Thank you. You know, one of the things that people forget is that the free public library is the most American institution that exists. Every other institution that we have is modeled on something from Europe or some other country, but every country that wanted to have a free public library modeled theirs on what we have here in the United States. And even though we've only been celebrating National Library Week since 1958, libraries will always be celebrated. As a matter of fact, I don't know if y'all remember, we had a little dip in the economy. Anybody remember that? I don't know. Well, that's when people remembered. We always had people coming to the library to do resumes and do their job searches. During that time, we filled up. And because we've had great leadership, not just externally with our wonderful library board, but also with our great library staff, we have been there, and we probably faced that little downturn, we all know how bad it really was. We faced it thanks to Fred James and our staff doing the financial projections, and we recovered faster than any other public institution. But thank you, and we, please help us remember that this coming week, by the way, how many of you have a library card right now? Oh, see there, isn't that wonderful? How many of you have a fine on that card? Okay, okay. Well, do you know that this week is the week that if you bring in for a canned good or any kind of dry item that we can give to Three Square, the food bank, we will take off up to $2 of your fine?
Only $2?
Well, bring in two cans, and you get up to $4. You bring in 50 cans, we'll give you up to $100 off.
I gotta bring in 200 cans.
200 cans for Councilman Barlow. I have three, but that's okay. Anyway, so what we're asking is that during this week and next week, even though this week ends National Library Week, remember to bring your stuff in and help those who are less fortunate, just like our bikers against child abuse. I was so impressed to hear about what they were doing, and all of the you do, our different city employees, we're all in this together, so thank you very much.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Hezen. As a council representative, I am asking for all parents and teachers to encourage your children and students to take advantage of the opportunity to schedule weekly visits to the Clark County Library District. In turn, this will broaden our children's knowledge in current and past events. There are many adventures in reading, and great study habits begin with this early childhood opportunity. So for that, I'm asking the mayor and council members to join me in recognizing today as the National Library Week here in the City of Las Vegas. So congratulations to you all again. Thank you.
There you go, Mayor.
Thank you. You had no prize, no certificate?
Yeah, they didn't want it.
Oh.
Dr. Lutz.
Okay, he failed to give it to you. He was so nervous about his outstanding debt, he didn't give it to you.
We'll wave two cans for you. Thank you.
Oh, that's wonderful. Our libraries are great, just great. Thank you. Okay, our next item, Councilman Coffin. What's your tie today? Oh, it's the Masters.
I got this tie 35 years ago in Augusta, Georgia, and I cannot take it off. It's just one of those things you wanna whip out every year. Where is Lisa Hibbler? I think Lisa's supposed to be here. Where are you hiding, Lisa? I believe you're supposed to be here, ma'am, to help us honor a wonderful educator representing a wonderful school and school district for the hard work that they do. One of the favored 13 elementary schools in Ward III, but it's the people behind them. Here is the microphone, Lisa, so that you might say a few words.
Thank you, Councilman Coffin. Today, we are really pleased to have Principal Katie Decker. Katie, if you could come on up with us. And, you know, a couple of years ago, the City of Las Vegas Mayor and City Council decided that education would be one of its strategic plan priorities. And as such, we put together a team of individuals that could help us look at improving the educational outcomes for children that lived in communities of poverty. And one of the members that served on that committee is Katie Decker. And of course, we needed to have Katie, because she's done some fantastic things, which Councilman Coffin is gonna talk about at her own school. And it really shows that all children can learn. You have to set those expectations, and you have to know that they have to know that they are loved. And when they step on Katie's campus, everybody knows that you can be somebody, you will be somebody, and all things are possible. So it is such a pleasure for us to be able to celebrate your successes and have you here with us today.
Thank you, Dr. Hibbler. Thank you, Dr. Hibbler. Don't go away. Well, we're honored today to recognize Katie for a lot of things, and I suppose she is a pioneer leader in the development of innovative strategies, which I think puts the light of the people who think that somehow private business should take over education, that somehow or another, the people who work for our school districts are just another public employee leeching at the public trough. And it's just so far from the truth, that when you see people like Katie here, you recognize that really, they represent the best, but the best is very, very deep in the ranks. It goes all the way to the newest teachers. We just are very proud of the teachers and the students, of course, who are performing now. Katie took Bracken, Walter Bracken, from one of the lowest-performing schools in the district to one of the highest. And now she's taken over at Long Elementary, and I'm glad that Katie is still in Ward III, where we visit all 13 schools, elementaries, in September to bring supplies to you that are not provided by the legislature. Those things that you and other teachers have to reach into your pocket to provide, we come around and do the best we can to help take care of things. That's what our budget does. And in your service, in the Educational Strategic Planning Committee, you got an award from the United Way, from the Women's Leadership Council, for financial stability, proving you know how to manage the money. And you've received many other local and national awards. We're pleased to honor you today. We're fortunate to have your expertise, and we hope that you'll stay with us forever. And we have a proclamation for you, Katie. I won't read it all, but I think it's so nice to have, you know? And we'll be happy to make another copy or two for the House and for your office, whatever you would like us to do, Katie. Walter Bracken is located at 1200 North 27th in Ward III. And all of you know that this is a hard-hit area. In fact, the Library Week brings up just a reason to shout about our district there, because in that very neighborhood, the library people who are here for Library Week shortly are going to also be here in about an hour or two for a recognition for the new library that's gonna be built right in that neighborhood. But that's our business, and we'll take care of that under Item 47. Katie, you've been a principal for 14 years in this district, and you ran the STEAM Academy, a 521-student, five-star school, the highest level under Nevada's School Accountability Rating System. And now you're the principal of Walter V. Long Elementary School, who was the head of the district when I came here as a little kid. You're involved in many influential projects in the district, and your ability to foster collaborations with others, particularly community partners who want to help but don't know how to do it, you've helped bring them in, and they love it. You've met numerous administrators, and you don't yourself seek the glory, and you don't rise up in the ranks of leadership, because you like to do, you know, you like to do your work in the field right there with the troops. I think we've said so much about you, but you speak for yourself. I want to hear, I want to hear you talk about your job and why you love it so much, because we truly are going to honor you today as Katie Decker Day. Wonderful. Please accept it.
Okay, that's not nice to do something that huge and then ask me to talk, but I'll do my best. But nothing that I've accomplished has been by myself, nothing. This is by far one of the coolest communities, full of amazing people who do want to help. And so what I've discovered is we just have to ask. And every time I meet anyone within this community, they always say, "What can we do for you? How can we help?" And the kids are the beneficiaries of that help. And so I've just really learned how to take advantage of that, just a little bit, and make sure that we get that help. And already at Walter Long, I've had, you know, several partners come in, and I've been there for one month, and we've been able to replace 22,000 square feet of grass, been able to get a rebate from the water district for that, been able to get partners who instantly said, "Here's some money, Katie, go ahead and build it right so that it can last forever," their concrete beds. So I just love our community and know that there's so many people here that are looking out for our kids and raising those expectations for them that they're more than capable of attaining if we all are consistent, collaborative, and develop our community together. So I'm just really blessed and fortunate and love my community.
Thank you, Katie.
That's my mom, and my son, and my daughter, and my... So I have my in-laws over here, and my daughter, and my son, and my mom. Come on up.
Come on up.
You have to come up. They are shy. They came all the way from Michigan and Ohio.
Get them up here. Get them up here.
Yeah.
Photo op. Photo.
Let's see, the photographers are in charge.
You're in charge. You tell me where to go.
Put these two guys on this side, please.
This side.
I'm a little closer.
Shoulder, shoulder, shoulder.
Ricky's here.
I am. I'm kicking it.
Katie is doing both schools. There's been a whole new plan in the Clark County School District, where superior leaders are recognized by taking over an additional school in addition to what, you have two schools this year. So back and forth, and with your staff as well?
Yeah, no. What we're doing is franchising, so I have the most amazing staff in the whole world at Bracken, and that's a team, and they're the model, and they're the hub of what we're
This side.
I'm a little closer.
Shoulder, shoulder, shoulder.
Congratulations.
Great. Congratulations, Katie.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I am. I'm kicking it.
Katie is doing both schools. There's been a whole new plan in the Clark County School District where superior leaders are recognized by taking over an additional school in addition to what, you have two schools this year. So back and forth, and with your staff as well?
Yeah, no. What we're doing is franchising. So I have the most amazing staff in the whole world at Bracken, and that's a team. And they're the model, and they're the hub of what we're going to replicate. And so the Long staff is also amazing people that just need consistency, climate, and culture. So they're going to learn from my staff. My staff are going to mentor them, and then they're going to replicate exactly what we do at Bracken. So the 830 children at Long just won the lottery without applying. They're going to have a magnet-like education. We're going to act as if, because there's no reason why you can't act as if. And so they're going to get a high-quality education, and the staff at Long is more than capable of providing that to them. So we're just going to work as a team. I'm going to need lots of community partners at Long, so if you want to get involved, come on over because I'll definitely take the help. And we're just changing the environment, and hopefully then others will see what we're doing, learn from that example, and replicate it as well because it's best practice, it's good for kids, and it works. We've proven that.
Wonderful. How exciting. How exciting for the children at Long as well as Bracken. Congratulations. You're the type, we admire you. You are what it's all about. And thank you. You're right, Councilman Coffin. The public schools will succeed here. Okay, now for our next item. Councilman Anthony's going to tell us a little bit about an organization also working to help young people.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's my honor to recognize a great group of people who have accepted the call to create a safe environment for the kids in our community that have been abused. They call themselves Bikers Against Child Abuse, or BACA. So at this point, I'd like to invite the Las Vegas chapter president of BACA. Obviously, you can tell they're bikers. They like their motorcycles, and bikers have to have road names. So the president's road name is Shadow. And this part is the kind of the ironic part. His first name is John, and his last name is BACA, which is the acronym for the organization. So that must be why they picked you or they named the organization after you. So thank you for coming down. Also, I'd like to recognize the Public Information Officer for BACA. His road name is Lobo, and that's Jess Leibert. So Jess, would you please come down here and welcome Jess? And third, I'd like to invite our own city of Las Vegas employee, information technology services architect. His road name is Nanook, and his name is Craig Andrews. Craig, one of our city employees. The motto for Bikers Against Child Abuse is "Breaking the Chains of Abuse." BACA's mission is to empower children to not feel afraid in the world in which they live, and BACA stands ready to lend support to our wounded friends by involving them with established, united organizations. BACA works with local and state officials who are already in place to protect children, and they send a clear message to all involved with abused children that they are prepared to lend their physical and emotional support by affiliation and physical presence. BACA is organized with a central contact person to receive calls from referring agencies and individuals. The entire BACA chapter then rides to meet the child, and the child is given a vest with a BACA patch sewn on the back. After this initial contact, the child is given the name and number of two BACA members residing geographically closest to them, who then become the child's primary contact person. Anytime the child feels scared or feels a need for the presence of a new BACA family member, the child may call upon these bikers to come to their house and provide the necessary reassurance to feel safe and protected. BACA members, supporters also support children by providing escorts for them if they feel scared in their neighborhoods, riding by their homes on a regular basis, supporting the children at court and parole hearings, attending their interviews, and staying with the children if they're alone, if they feel alone or frightened. At this point, I'd like to ask the president, John, to say a few words.
Well, not women for speeches, really. I prefer to just take action and do what's got to be done. I cannot thank all of you for recognizing what we do. We try so hard. We're all volunteers. We do this on our own time. We're there 24/7 for whatever any child needs. We try to empower them, not to be of their surroundings, their environment, and to have a normal child, childhood, you know, go outside, play with the neighbors and all that stuff. Thank you so very much. I'd like to turn this over to Lobo. He's our speaker.
What can I say? I'm the lucky one. First off, I'd like to thank Mayor Pro Tim Anthony. Appreciate this. Madam Mayor, city council members, this is quite a recognition for us, not only for us as a Nevada chapter, but for us as an international organization. We are throughout the entire states. We are in Canada, Australia, and six other countries internationally with much, much more coming along the lines. So this is obviously something that we take to heart. Child abuse is not something that we look lightly on. We don't like it. We don't want to see it, and that's why we fight every day to try and stop the abuse. We want this to end. And it's with recognition like this that helps get us out there more and more and allows opportunities for us to get involved with families and children who need help like us. So thank you very much.
And if I could have the men and women from BACA, could you guys all stand up and give them a nice round of applause for volunteering to help our abused kids? Thank you very much. Yeah. Is, okay, you can go ahead and sit down now. Did you want to just, just, get over here? Just tell everybody if they want, how they can get involved, if they can make a contribution, anything like that, if they want to become a member? Do you want to let them know that?
I think both of these guys are better at that than I am, but we have our meetings at the Elks Lodge on the third Thursday of every month, which is this Thursday, so tomorrow night, at 6:30 PM. Our meetings are open for anybody. Come down and see what we're all about. We will always take money, but what we do with that money is we use it for children's therapy, for, we have little tattoos and flyers and stuff. All of this is done, nobody in BACA makes money anywhere from the very highest person to the very, well, we're all the same, really. But nobody gets a paycheck. Everything is volunteer, so anything you wanted to donate, it'll go to the children. So thank you for that.
Is there a website?
There is a website, bakaworld.org. And then there's Nevada chapter. You can look at our chapters. You can find us in there. And by the way, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So John, on behalf of the mayor and the entire city council, I'd like to present you a proclamation that basically says what I already read and proclaims today, Bikers Against Child Abuse Day in the city of Las Vegas. So congratulations. There you go. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, thank you. Wonderful. So remember the website one more time for contributions. You're a 501(c)(3). We are a 501(c)(3) here, so please.
It's bakaworld.org.
Okay. Great.
And if you want to see some really cool motorcycles, you got to go outside. They are lined up perfectly, and there's some great motorcycles. So go out there and take, so you can't leave until we're done, so everybody can go out and look at them, okay?
Thank you. Thank you. That's great. Wonderful. Congratulations. Thank you for the work you do. Such good people in our community. It's wonderful. And for our final two items, I'm going to turn this over to Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. We've got some very wonderful people in this community. You guys are great. I appreciate you. I'm going to change things up a little bit. First, I'm going to bring up one of my favorite principals because I represent four high schools in Centennial Hills. Centennial High School Principal Trent Day. Mr. Day, would you come on up here? And I'm also going to ask Coach Karen Whites to come up here, too. Coach, come on up here. And the reason they're walking up here. Coach, you don't look thrilled. Come on, where's that, where's that excitement? I'm going to introduce to you Nevada State Champions in Women's Basketball, Centennial Women's Basketball Team. Girls, come on down here. Nevada State Champions. And you guys stand up front. Girls, spread out behind us. Spread out behind us. Yeah, you guys right there. One of you over here. One of you over here, Coach. This team brought the championship back to Las Vegas. And I'm going to pick on Councilman Coffin a little bit. Okay, stop there. Stop, girls. Stop. Okay, now we're all spread out. Okay, just what we needed. And I'm going to pick on Councilman Coffin because I think Councilman Coffin went to Gorman, but these girls beat Gorman, Bishop Gorman High School, February 27, 65 to 52 final score. They finished the season 31 and 2. This is the seventh state championship. The last time they won was in 2011, and this team has, is a dynasty seven championships. I don't know what that means, but I'm sure you'll try to explain that. Great, Coach. Okay. Coach, I'm going to hand it over to you first. Talk about these great young ladies behind us. I'll hand it to Mr. Day next.
Well, again, once again, thank you for having us here, the council and the mayor. I mean, what a great opportunity for these girls to be a part of. I was at the school, obviously, since Centennial's opened in 1999. I've been there since the school has opened, so some of these young ladies here weren't even born at that time. We have one. This is our seventh state title. I guess that's where the information came from, so. Great group of gals, though. Obviously, this is their first, some of them, but their seventh. There's some days, I guess, I fired them, and then I rehired them as well because as the conversation went, but great, great group of kids. Obviously, as someone else said, you can't do this type of thing by yourself. Great assistants, Cassandra Adams, Katie Lutman, two of my assistants, our administrator, Principal Trent Day here with us today. I mean, it does take a group of people to make everything happen, but, you know, just a great sense of pride and stuff that's gone on there. Lois, you've been a part of this since we've been up here from the first one, so I just want to say thanks for everything because I asked Mr. Day, I said, "I think Lois has been up there since our first one." We've been up here with Oscar, you know, many times, and now with you. I mean, what an honor. So we're just very thankful for everything and, Councilman, for recognizing the girls.
Talks about a lot, a lot about leadership in the program, too, Coach. Good job. Mr. Day, before I hand the microphone over to you, I told the girls earlier before our meeting started, Mr. Day was in the dunk tank with me out at Tulie Springs during the spring celebration that we partnered with Foster Connect. Mr. Day, I appreciate you doing that. And I know you want to brag about these girls, too, before I hand it over to the team captain.
Well, thank you, and I want to thank the mayor and the council for inviting us again. I don't remember exactly how many I've been to, but it's always a great honor to come here. But there's a couple of things I want to talk about real quick is our coaching staff. We win on the court, obviously, with seven state championships, but what is most impressive about their work and the work ethic that hopefully our girls have instilled in them is that they do have a work ethic and that in the classroom is a priority. And I don't know the percentage, but I know it's upwards of 95% of kids that go through Coach Whites and her program go off to college, and they are student athletes. And so I appreciate walking the campus every day to have outstanding student athletes. And so thank you for being outstanding student athletes at Centennial High School. And as I tell you every day, you are so sensational. So have a sensational day at Centennial.
Right on. Good job, Mr. Day. Karina, where's Karina Brandon? There you are, girl. Come on up here. This is Karina Brandon. She is the team captain, and you're a senior this year?
Yes.
Where are you going to college?
Salt Lake Community College.
Salt Lake Community College. That'll work, too. Okay, Karina, talk about your friends and your team.
All right. So I just want to say thank you first, but without these 12 ladies behind me and these three amazing coaches, I wouldn't even have been here today. It's such a great opportunity to be in this program for all these four years. I don't know how I'd be without these ladies, and I just want to say thank you for everything. So.
Good job. Give me five. Good job.
Each one says their name.
I like that. I like that, Mayor. Would all of you introduce yourselves, please? Just hand the microphone down. And ladies, tell our audience of the city of Las Vegas what grade you're in as well.
Coach Katie Lutman.
Senior.
Senior.
Coach Cassandra Adams.
Head coach Karen Whites. And by the way, I do want to mention, too, Cassandra and I have been coaching together for over 20 years, so it's not like there's a lot of inconsistencies with what goes on in our program. So I just want, she's awfully shy and doesn't say a whole lot. We sometimes say we're the pin and teller of women's basketball, so those of you that understand that, so, but definitely appreciate her.
Courtney Walker, 10th grade.
Karina Brandon, 12th grade.
Justice Etheridge, 9th grade.
Jaden Eggleston, 10th grade.
Alex Stalker, 11th grade.
Shaila Miller, 10th grade.
Lauren Welch, 10th grade.
Pam Wilmore, 10th grade. Tangjane Wells, Jr., 11th grade.
Dejana Childs, 10th grade.
Megan Jefferson, 10th grade.
Scottiana Thomas, 10th grade.
Sarah Kruthop, 10th grade.
Trent Day, principal. And as you notice, we only have one senior, so you can let Councilman Coffin know that.
That means that state championship next year, right, ladies? For the next three years, the mayor is requesting. Next three years. And ladies, while I saw you sitting up there in the audience, it heard to me that, I want to point a couple of things out to you, actually, more than that. We have a woman mayor. We have a woman, city councilwoman. We have a woman city manager who runs our city. Chief Freeman, where at? Chief Freeman, chief of detention enforcement, is a woman. You following the pattern? Okay? I just, I'm just trying to get you guys some goals here, okay? So once again, give them another great big round of applause. Thank you, ladies. Thanks, Coach.
Just come in. Oh, yeah. The lady with the olive in her tummy. Bring it home next year, too. Shaila, your mom wants a picture. Can I get a picture with you? I don't know. Yes, one, two, three. Got it. Okay. Yes, because her mother took a picture. Thank you. Next, next year, we'll see you back here, same time, same place. See you next year.
Good job, ladies. A lot of you may be wondering why I'm dressed like this. Do you feel the breeze? I'll tell you why. First, I want Scott Carter to come back up here and join me. Scott, come up here. You're in, you're in full uniform. Give Scott a round of applause. He's a city employee. He, he works in economic development. He dresses up with me every year. I appreciate that. He also gave her an invocation this morning. And there are some ladies from the Celtic Society, I believe, here. Ladies, are you here? You come on up here. And I see you're up there, too. Come on up here. And let me introduce to you one more time, as these ladies come up here, Josh McCracken. Josh. I knew I was going to mess that up. There was like seven versions in my brain. You ladies are from St. Andrews, or you're from St. Andrews, and you're from the Celtic Society. I'm going to let you go first and talk about what's going on, and then I'll hand the microphone to you. Does that sound good?
All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm Tori Bullock. I'm the president of the Las Vegas Celtic Society, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization made up of volunteers here in Las Vegas that puts on an annual Celtic Gathering and Highland Games every year in April, Floydland Park at Tulie Springs. This weekend is our weekend. So if you're interested in Celtic food, you want some haggis, some meat pies, you want to hear some bag piping, you want to watch grown men and women in kilts throw telephone poles and heavy things, listen to Celtic music, see Irish dancers, Scottish dancers, all of that stuff we're offering to you this weekend at Floydland Park at Tulie Springs. And it is an all-volunteer organization. We put on an event for thousands of people, and no one gets paid. Everyone does it on their own time.
And this is, the games, the competition, they go from city to city and state to state, and you bring in people from other countries as well. I mean, some of these band competitions, and if you haven't gone out there and seen this, it is quite the experience just to listen to the bands, the drummers, the bagpipes. And when Josh was playing earlier in recognition of Tuesday, James and Gary Gray, I get a tiramai every time I hear the bagpipes, and it just, it always touches me deeply. So folks, if you haven't had that opportunity to go out to Tulie Springs, go out there and do it this weekend. It is an amazing, amazing event. You won't, you won't feel bad about going out. Please, tell us about the St. Andrews Society.
All right. Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us up here.[1793.33]
And the reason we do this every year in around the same time is because April 6th in 1320 was the Declaration of Arbroath, the Scottish Declaration of Independence. It was signed then. Our own American Declaration of Independence was modeled after this inspirational document, so that's why this is so important. We're talking about National Tartan Day. National Tartan Day, first officially observed in 1998 by the passage of United States Senate Resolution 155, commemorates the signing of the Declaration of Arbroath and recognizes the vibrant and influential role that Americans of Scottish descent have played in the creation and development of our own nation. Scottish Americans have helped shape every aspect of our society through their contributions in business, science, medicine, technology, education, sports, and the arts. On the occasion of the National Tartan Day, celebrated each April 6th, we're a little late because we were trying to tie it into the games, we take this opportunity to honor the many contributions, accomplishments, and cultural traditions of the members of the Scottish community in Las Vegas, Nevada. So, we, the mayor and the city council of Las Vegas, do hereby proclaim April 15th today Tartan Day in the city of Las Vegas. Congratulations, and I'll give this to you, because the rest of the crews are out there working at the park. Josh wouldn't be alone. He'd normally have a whole entourage coming right behind him, but they're all out there getting ready for the, for the games. So, folks, if you haven't had that opportunity, you don't have to be Scottish, you don't have to be Irish, and you don't have to be English to go out there. It doesn't matter. We're the melting pot, I feel, of the United States here in Las Vegas. All faiths, all cultures right here in Las Vegas. It's just a great opportunity for those councilmembers who enjoy the tip of the whiskey. There's lots of that going on out there, too. So, once again, give them a round of applause. Scott, thanks for helping me out, and you're a good man. Who wants to hear one more song by Josh? One more song? Yeah? Thank you, mayor.
You know, I wonder who invented that instrument? You know, do you know anything about the history of the bagpipe? Oh, could you please? I mean, how did anybody take, it looks like the stomach of some animal, blow it up, and then put things in it to make some music? So, could you tell us about the history?
Absolutely. So, the bagpipe, and if any of you are interested in bagpipes, by the way, the Las Vegas Pipe Band does teach people here in the area, so you can learn. It's very easy. So, originally, the bagpipe was actually started in Egypt, ancient Egypt. Most people don't know that. It was all played separately, so I like to think that the Egyptians and Romans invented the bagpipe and the Scots just perfected it. So, we decided that since we didn't have that many friends, we'd put all of them into one instrument and then add a bag to it. And originally, it was a sheep's stomach, because that's what we had on hand back then. So, you play into this part, the blowpipe, and it actually has four reeds, so you get to play a four-reeded instrument essentially all at the same time.
How long take you to learn?
I started playing about 10 years ago, so, but usually, we have people in the band, depending on how early you start, what your kind of musicianship level is at the time. We have people that are up on pipes, playing with a band, and within a year, maybe two years, depending on how long they play and how often they practice, practice a lot.
It's absolutely wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for the memorial this morning. See? Sheep's stomach. This is awesome. Absolutely awesome. You know, we are the melting pot, and it is wonderful, and we're so proud to be Americans. But, it's very important to remember history and from where we come. So, it's beautiful and the lineage that's there. And you have good knees? I'm not sure. Well, Scott, it's all right. It's almost covered. It's all right. So, anyway, thank you. Thank you, ladies, very much for joining us. And we will, hold on one second while I poll. Do we move right into our council, or do we want to take a potty break? Okay, 10:30. This side rules already, so I didn't even get over to you. So, we will, it is, I have 17 after. We will reconvene at 10:30. Thank you all for participating and coming. And congratulations, Centennial.
Okay, everyone. It is, sorry, late. Ten thirty-five. Okay. Okay, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. Thank you. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. We will set the time at one minute. And keep in mind, at the end of the meeting, these are for agendized items. At the end of the meeting, of course, there will be three-minute public comment as well. So I have from Bill Christie, a card. And again, that does not preclude anyone else from speaking. And if you repeat your name for the record, please.
Sure, Mayor. My name is Bill Christie. I'm the Vice President of No Kill Las Vegas. I live at ten forty-seven East Oki Boulevard. Councilman Coffin is my councilman. I wanted to speak to you just briefly today about this sham of an investigation that came out on the Animal Foundation. Finally, it's my understanding that the investigator submitted it on the twenty-third of February, and it was sat on by the city conveniently until all voting had finished culminating with the vote of the county on the seventeenth of March. I'd like to know how you can make sense of an investigation that on page thirty states the Animal Foundation practices related to owner-surrendered animals do violate contractual agreements. This is admitted both by the investigator and by the Executive Director of the Animal Foundation herself. How do you make sense of an investigation where multiple former employees allege horrible things of the Animal Foundation? One, Ms. Bianco alleges that when she was there aborted puppies and kittens that were living, viable, breathing animals were put in plastic bags and thrown in the freezer. The investigator says that she couldn't provide any backup information. Ms. Bianco says she was never even spoken to by an investigator.
Okay, Mr. Christie, thank you very much. And you are welcome to come back at the public comment at the end. I appreciate your taking the time to come down. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item thirteen for possible action. Any items that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, cable withdrawn, or helmed in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item, item thirty-five on Nevada. Restaurant services, DBA, Dottie's, ten thousand West Sahara. Applicant has asked us to be obeyed till May twentieth, two thousand and fifteen. That's my motion.
Okay, there's a motion. This is on Agenda Item thirty-five, has been requested to be obeyed till May twentieth, and that's been required by the applicant. And please vote, and then please post. Thank you very much. Agenda Item fourteen for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the March fourth, March eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, regular sitting meetings. Is there a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Agenda Items fifteen through forty-four with the abeyance of Agenda Item thirty-five to May twentieth, on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments, may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward?
Yes, Mayor.
Please.
Item twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay. Anyone else, please? All right. Please, um...
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda items fifteen through forty-two except for twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and thirty-five.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote. And please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item twenty-three, abeyance item for possible action to approve a tavern license for a change of ownership from Larry's Old Ranch, Inc. to the Hideaway Bar and Grill, LLC, DBA, The Hideaway Bar and Grill at thirty-three sixty-nine Tom Boulevard. Luanne Culver, managing member. This is in Ward five with Councilman Barlow. Councilman?
Yes. Karen, if you go ahead and tee up this item for me.
Thank you, Your Honor. On behalf of Business Licensing, Karen Duddleston. Item twenty-three is for a tavern license. We have had concerns from neighbors concerning noise at this location, so Business Licensing has proposed on this item the following conditions. One, no music or entertainment activity allowed outside the building. No entertainment after ten PM weeknights and one AM on Friday and Saturday nights. A security plan must be approved by the director to include parking area and address any noise emanating from the approved entertainment. Door must remain closed when facility has entertainment. A vestibule may be required by the licensing authority to mitigate noise impacts, and all activities must be confined to the interior of the building.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. How are you?
I'm good.
Good. It's okay. Have you all communicated with the neighbors?
Yes, I have.
Excuse me, if you would. Would you state your names for the record, both of you?
Luanne Culver.
Good morning. Serena Troy with National Licensing Services.
Thank you.
Okay. And have you all communicated with the residents on that block and understand their concerns?
Yes, I have. I have written a letter and attached a personal business card with my personal cell number on it, and walked the neighborhood and sent out forty of them, I believe.
And so I'm sure they've shared with you what their concerns are and why the conditions that are on this application are being proposed. And you agree to those conditions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, we're good. Because I want to make sure that you all still have an opportunity to enjoy the entertainment value that you bring into this long-lasting facility that has been there for many years, but at the same time making sure that we don't impact those neighbors that enjoy their quiet rural lifestyle after the sun goes down. So if you're in agreeance with that, I'll move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions that have been placed on the record.
Thank you. Councilman, question on number three. What is the timeline on that?
On number three or twenty-three?
No, on twenty-three, under the recommendation, security plan must be approved by the director to include parking areas and address noise emanating from the approved entertainment. What was the timeline of when that must be done? Karen?
We would work with the applicant. We would not release a permanent license until that was completed.
Okay.
So their temporary would expire.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item twenty-three. Please vote, and please post.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And let me know if you need anything. Okay?
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Don't go away so fast, though. This looks like you, too.
You know...
Yes, Agenda Item twenty-four.
Twenty-four, Mayor.
Yes?
I'll move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions that have been placed on the record.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve on Agenda Item twenty-four as well. Please vote, and please post. That motion carries as well. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duddleston. Okay, and Agenda Item twenty-five, abeyance item for possible action to approve a new pistol permit license, Easy Pawn Nevada, Inc., DBA, Easy Pawn at sixty thirty-two West Cheyenne. This is also in Councilman Barlow's Ward five.
Right. I ask that this item be brought forward because the request originally came to not only take in pistols, but also have an opportunity to sell pistols. And so I just wanted to remain consistent in regards to those pawn shops that I've approved in the past to take in pistols. However, absolutely no pistols are to be sold from pawn shops specifically in Ward five proper. And so the applicant, as I understand, Karen, has now withdrawn their request to sell pistols, but yet still take in the pistols and place them in the hands of a third party to be sold either online or elsewhere versus out the actual facility of where the weapon will be taken in. Is that accurate?
Correct. The applicant has agreed to the following condition. No retail sales of long guns or handguns at this business location. So they will be able to take them in and transfer them to another dealer, maybe one of their other sites, or it may be another handgun dealer. But they would not be able to sell any long guns or handguns at this location.
Okay, great. And so as long as the applicant agrees to that, then I'll move to follow staff's recommendation for approval. Just assuring that there will be absolutely no gun sales at this facility.
And we will be monitoring that through our enforcement agents as well.
Thank you. That is my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion on Agenda Item twenty-five. Please vote, and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much. Agenda Item forty-three, report from the National Park Service, U.S. Department of the Interior regarding the Tulley Springs Fossil Beds National Monument and the Park Service's Centennial Campaign All Awards. Hi there, how are you? Good morning, Mr. Levis.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman and members of the council. For the record, Ted O'Levis, your Chief of Staff. The item before you is a report from the National Park Service. The National Park Service was created in nineteen sixteen, and as you know, that we are now close to two units of the National Park Service, one being the Lake Mead National Recreation Area, I've got to get this right, and the second being the new Tulley Springs Fossil Beds National Monument. I'm joined by some friends of ours from the National Park Service. You probably all know Kristy Vanover, who I call the voice of the National Park Service, particularly in southern Nevada; Vince Santucci, who's the Superintendent of the new Tulley Springs Fossil Beds National Monument, as well as Patrick Gubbins, who's the Superintendent of the Lake Mead National Recreation Area. They're going to provide you a brief overview of the efforts that are happening with Tulley Springs as well as their centennial celebration. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our friends in the National Park Service.
Wonderful. We're so excited to have you here. And once you take the microphone, will you reintroduce yourself, please, for the record?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Vince Santucci. I'm the Acting Superintendent for the new Tulley Springs Fossil Beds National Monument. And on behalf of the National Park Service, we thank you for this opportunity to meet with you this morning. We greatly appreciate the support that we've received from the city of Las Vegas and from the various stakeholders and the community. It's been extremely overwhelming in terms of the positive feedback that we've received. Tulley Springs Fossil Beds National Monument was established on December nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen, in order to conserve, protect, interpret, and enhance for the benefit of present and future generations, unique and nationally important paleontological, scientific, educational, and recreational resources and values of this land. The area consists of about twenty-two thousand six hundred and fifty acres on the north end of Las Vegas, and it's certainly rich in fossils. It's internationally known in terms of the significance of these paleontological resources, and we have this wonderful interface, urban interface, that we look at developing opportunities for the public, for programming, for facilities, so that we can promote scientific study and provide education to the schoolchildren in your community, and also to provide support to visitors that come from international areas. There's a large area along Highway ninety-five where the monument occurs just above that area. So again, we're looking forward to meeting with the community. We feel that we've been welcomed as a new neighbor in the community, and we've received considerable positive feedback ideas because our goal is to make Tulley Springs a crown jewel of the National Park Service and part of the Las Vegas community. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmen, councilwomen. It's a pleasure to be here and honored to be here. I'm Patrick Gubbins. I'm the Acting Superintendent of the Lake Mead National Recreation Area. And what I wanted to share with you this morning is that the National Park Service is starting to celebrate our centennial year. It's actually two thousand and sixteen, but we're starting with the Find Your Park campaign. We're pretty excited about this because Las Vegas is fortunate enough to have approximately seven and a half million acres of open space surrounding our great community of Las Vegas and greater Las Vegas Valley. In the general vicinity here, from a regional standpoint, we have eight national parks, including Lake Mead National Recreation Area and now Tulley Springs Fossil Beds National Monument. Collectively with the national parks, we welcome twenty million visitors a year to our region.
Wow.
Combined with these visitors, they spend about one point two billion dollars in local communities in support of approximately fifteen thousand jobs. From Las Vegas, everyone can find their park, and I'm going to show you a brief video to explain how.
America, land of the free, home of the brave. It's the greatest country on earth. And if the good old U.S.A. doesn't... It's the greatest country on earth, and if the good old U.S. of A doesn't warrant a celebration, then really, what does? But we're not talking about rolling out the barbecue and running around with sparklers. It's not a once-a-year thing. It's a once-in-a-lifetime thing because a single day just isn't enough. We're talking a two-plus-year extravaganza dedicated to a single idea, America's greatest idea, the National Park Service, and in two thousand sixteen, it's turning a hundred. Our National Park Service is revered by all, open to all, and enjoyed by all. There are no Blue Parks or Red Parks, only American Parks, from iconic giants to four hundred other sites dedicated to everything from history and recreation to human ingenuity and the struggle for justice. As part of the festivities, we'll be kicking off a movement to support America's national parks, a nationwide crusade that will introduce the parks to a whole new generation of Americans. In fact, literally redefining what the word "park" means. Is it possible to redefine such a word? We think so, and we're going to prove it with Find Your Park, a mass awareness, multifaceted program that will demonstrate that a park, a national park, is way more than most of us previously imagined. Find Your Park will be everywhere, from traditional and multicultural media outlets like TV, print, and out-of-home, to must-be-there platforms like digital, social engagement, and activation. We'll be educating people on the mission of the National Park Service and its official nonprofit partner, the National Park Foundation, while inviting each and every American to find their park, be it a place, a feeling, a sense of pride, a lesson learned, a playground of epic proportions, or perhaps even all of the above. There will be challenges, discoveries, and invitations for people to submit their own stories. Find Your Park will touch grade schools, universities, and local communities, both urban and rural, across the country. Corporate partners will also be getting involved like never before. Celebrity talent, we'll have plenty of that, too, an A-list of musicians, actors, artists, and authors. Does it warrant a parade? You bet, and we've got it covered. A TV series? That's in the works, too. An IMAX movie? Why not? Quite simply, Find Your Park will infiltrate and work its glorious tendrils into every corner of pop culture and beyond. The question really is, why wouldn't you want to be part of this unique time and the continually evolving story of America? Join the movement by supporting the national parks. It's going to be big. It's going to be great. It's going to be the celebration of the century. It starts now, and with your help, it'll propel us forward for another hundred years.
That's fabulous.
So it starts now. We're starting next week is National Park Week, and to celebrate it, we're going to have a weekend of free entrances, entrances for everybody at all the national parks. On April eighteenth, we're going to have Rangers at the Clark County Children's Festival. We're really excited about that. On the nineteenth, we're encouraging everyone to take photos in their park and share it on Instagram using hashtag FindYourParkInstaMeet. You can use hashtag Vegas, too, to let people know that you found your park in Las Vegas. April twenty-fifth is Junior Ranger Day. Kids are invited to the park where they can be sworn in as junior rangers. There will be lots of fun, hands-on activities at Boulder Beach Picnic Area and Lake Mead National Recreation Area. The festivities don't end there. We have a lot planned in May also, including First Friday, the Science Festival, and National Safe Boating Week. We're looking forward to a great summer, and we invite you to Lake Mead and Tulley Springs to Find Your Park. Thank you very much.
That is wonderful. How about participating and having a kiosk or something at our Eldorado days?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Great idea, Mayor. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
If you may make a comment.
Oh, yes, please. Councilwoman and then Councilman?
I just wanted to ask something. I was told that we, the United States, were the first to ever have national public parks, and that to this day, we still are to have them. Is that true?
I don't know the answer to that.
I was, one of the wonderful, wonderful things about our national public parks is the fact that we have them even. At one time, we didn't. We started with one, and then we began to add them. But I sort of took it for granted that they had a lot of public parks in Europe, but they didn't. Those were not public parks, and I just think that's another thing for which we should be very grateful for in our country.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. In fact, the United States gave birth to the concept of a national park, and that idea was born in places like Yellowstone National Park, Yosemite Valley, and elsewhere. And that idea has spread across the country. The whole concept of a national park has evolved over time. Now, we're going to be moving into our second century, and we're going to premiere Tulley Springs Fossil Beds National Monument as one of the parks in our new century for the national park system. So again, thank you.
Wonderful. Councilman Ross and then Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank all of you for that presentation. I'm getting very excited about our new relationship with the National Park Service, and I think from Ms. Brettwell's executive staff as well. This is a new relationship for us, and I think that we have an opportunity here to build upon that relationship, certainly help you guys reach your goals and certainly the goals of the city of Las Vegas when it comes to Tulley Springs because it's a very important asset to this community. Welcome on board, Mr. Santucci. I think you're going to enjoy your time here. I understand it's limited, however, but as Ms. Vanover and I talked about, our first day that we met out at the fossil beds, this is a new adventure for you and your career, and I think in yours, all of yours, Patrick, yours as well, because-
Yes.
When's the last time you created a brand-new national park, national monument? You know, you may have, I mean, this is all new to us, certainly, but this is an exciting historic time in the city of Las Vegas, all of southern Nevada, as a matter of fact. So I'm just stoked about that. I think all of us are. You want to add to that through the mayor, of course?
There's very few reasons that would keep me away from my two young daughters and my wife in Pennsylvania for three months. This is one of those missions. I truly believe from my communication with the stakeholders and friends that are here in Nevada that we really want to lay the foundation for an incredible opportunity to produce an experience not only to look at Ice Age fossils, but other aspects of developing a modern national park to meet the needs of the broader community.
Yes, please.
If I may?
Yes.
Can I ask then, and I'll ask Ms. Brettwell as well, through you, Mayor, and to the rest of the staff, and to you guys, because this is a new relationship with us, I think we should have a regular level of communication where when you guys are doing things, whether it's Lake Mead or anywhere in southern Nevada, maybe use this venue as an opportunity to get that message out there because we're partners now forever.
We would welcome that, Councilman. Thank you so very much.
You bet.
It's an honor to be part of our community here and to have the support that we have.
So I gather by your comment there, you were asking them to stay in touch with our city manager, just come back and give us updates as you proceed. Thank you.
I think, Mayor, as their community partnered with us now, we have not ever had this relationship as a city of Las Vegas with the National Park Service. So this is great, and I think we can take advantage of that relationship on a much broader scale, certainly as we're communicating things about the fossil beds, certainly about anything that the National Park Service is doing in southern Nevada, Ms. Brettwell. I think this would be a good venue for them to get on that soapbox and talk about it, Mayor. That's kind of where I'm going with that.
Good idea. Thank you. And Councilman Barlow, you had a comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you also very much for what you do. I've had an opportunity to receive the annual pass, and what I was really excited about was the opportunity to go to other states, such as California and Arizona and Utah, and utilize that annual pass. The only downside to it, though, is if you don't have your pass, you're not automated at your gates, so therefore, you can't pull my name up, so I have to pay the additional fee, which is not a problem because I know it's going toward a great cause as far as to enter those national parks. But if there were a way or is a way to automate those gates so that your patrons will have an opportunity to take advantage of the variety of parks through your national pass, that would be very helpful, you know, by showing idea, whatever the case may be, if someone forgets the pass like myself. But I really enjoy that concept of being able to pay that annual pass and have an opportunity to experience other states and the national parks that they have to offer to include those right here in the state of Nevada. So keep up the good work. Appreciate the work that you do and look forward to a continued collaboration together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
And if I, oh, excuse me. Sorry. If I may add to that, and thank you, I'll share that up the chain to see if there's something they can do to accommodate something like that. That's a good suggestion. But I would like to add that in this two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year, we will be giving free annual passes to all fourth graders to share with their families. So all fourth graders, through the Every Kid in a Park campaign, will get a free pass to go to all of America's four hundred and seven national parks.
How about grandparents? No, I got a fourth grader.
They can absolutely bring their grandparents, yes.
Great. Thank you all. We're so excited about this. Thank you very much. Okay, Agenda Item Forty-four, report regarding the status of the National Museum of Organized Crime and Law Enforcement after Three Years of Operations. And the presentation, we have a presentation of a check, which we love, which is an annual payment of historic tax credits, and we welcome Jonathan Olman, who is our executive director. And Mr. Riggelman, you are on call here. Introducing him, perhaps?
No, ma'am, I continue.
Okay, thank you.
Jonathan Olman, Executive Director of the Mob Museum, Mayor, members of City Council. It was almost exactly a year ago today that we were before you presenting the first equity payment, one point five million dollars. Bit more theatrics last year than we have this year, but cash is cash. I know that we don't have a great deal of time to get into all the ways in which the Mob Museum has been growing over the course of the past year. We are growing fast, and we've, proud to say, have accomplished quite a bit. So I just wanted to give some highlights and a few examples of those accomplishments in the past year. Our attendance for two thousand fourteen exceeded two hundred and seventy thousand people. That's more than twenty percent growth over the year prior, which represents almost fifty thousand more people than can in two thousand thirteen. We're happy to see that while we don't believe twenty-plus percent on an annual basis is in any way sustainable, we are still enjoying double-digit growth over the year prior. So the trajectory in terms of visitation remains extremely positive. Equally important, if not more important, the guest reaction is extraordinary. If you were to go on TripAdvisor today, you would see us ranked as number sixteen of six hundred and eighty-six things to do in Las Vegas, number one of fifty-two museums. The people that come through our doors regularly leave us guest comment cards that say that ninety-eight percent of them rate us as good or excellent. Scale of one to ten likelihood of recommending to a friend or family member, nine point two. So extremely positive guest reaction. We're very proud of that. And last year, almost five million dollars pushed back into the economy. So we know that, as is part of our mission, being financially independent and helping with the revitalization of downtown Las Vegas is extremely important. That operating budget is projecting at five point eight for this year. So again, that twenty percent growth that we're very pleased with. Beyond the numbers, just wanted to give some more examples of how we advance our mission. So some of the images here, just again, some little snapshot on ways in which we serve the community. So that first picture up there, the people lined up around the corner, that comes from our anniversary. We make certain that we have free days, at least twice a day. Our anniversary on February fourteenth, as well as the anniversary of the KEF Offer Committee hearings on November fifteenth are free days. We work hard to make certain that we have other types of offers throughout the year so that guests that have difficulty paying that full admission fee are able to enjoy the museum. This other image we have here, the brochure from our community safety forums, this is a great example of some of the partnerships we're establishing. So NV Energy has sponsored this program, which we put on in conjunction with Metro. So individuals from Metro, once a month, come in, give presentations at the Mob Museum on different topics that are important to members of the community, and we're able to have those members of the community come in, get this education at no charge. So they're able to enjoy both the museum experience as well as that one-on-one interaction, that very intimate interaction with members of the police department. And other things we're doing, you can see this image here of Superintendent Skorkowski, who was in our courtroom back in January. This was what we called an evening of information and inspiration we put on in conjunction with Bank of Nevada and the Las Vegas Metro Chamber as a way of helping to generate more volunteers from the community to help with the Clark County School District's Partnership Office. So all of that community engagement is extremely important to us. To the point of, you know, our role in helping with the revitalization of downtown Las Vegas, you can see the images on this particular slide. You're probably pretty familiar with the local coverage we get. This is from the Travel and Tourism Rally that was, that took place outside our doors, also coincided with the opening of our Cowboy Sheriff exhibit. You can see that image of former Sheriff Ralph Lamb. We get great coverage in the local market with the various things we do throughout the year. What's maybe less familiar are all of the different outlets that carry stories about the Mob Museum nationally and internationally. So we've, you know, there's some examples of an article in the U.S. Airways here. We've gotten great coverage, whether it's Canadian-based, Germany, Australia, the UK. It's really been quite extraordinary to see all the different news outlets that have featured the Mob Museum. So this slide here has got great article and accolades that came from AAA, The Huffington Post, The Examiner, The Los Angeles Times, and that's extremely important to us. You know, again, it's not just about the Mob Museum, it's about how can we help increase visitation to downtown Las Vegas. Another just great example of how we continue to grow as an organization is through the new exhibits, the exhibit refinements we make, and the special programs we do. So this is just an example of something that's going to happen tomorrow, as a matter of fact. We are debuting our Follow the Money exhibit, which is an exhibit that features stories of the history of the Team Men. So these are some of the lesser-known heroes of the thirties and forties in particular that were really essential in bringing down organized crime figures. You know, some of the better-known or more notorious criminals, such as Al Capone and Waxy Gordon, were brought down by these Treasury agents that were the early IRS criminal investigators. We have a new exhibit that will be about this. You can see one of the artifacts here, this firearm that came, that we acquired from a descendant of an undercover agent with the Treasury Department. This firearm traveled from New Jersey just a couple of weeks ago by way of IRS criminal as well as the ATF. It was picked up in an Associated Press story that got extraordinary coverage across the country, U.S. News, The Washington Times, Atlanta Journal, really extraordinary coverage. We'll debut that exhibit tomorrow afternoon. We also have a special program in the evening, and among those guests is Chief Rich Weber, who is the current head of IRS Criminal Investigations nationally. So he's in charge of all IRS criminal investigations worldwide. So again, this is just an example of some of the things that we do that help keep our experience dynamic, keep us fresh, get us out in the news, and help create a better guest experience. I'm not going to go into all of the awards and accolades, but just wanted to lay them out for you here, as well as all of the different events that are upcoming throughout the year. There are over seventy-five special programs that we will hold in the museum in two thousand fifteen. You know, again, everything ranging from these panel discussions in the courtroom in the evening to author talks to the community safety forums on Saturday mornings, always keeping it fresh and finding new ways to grow. Of course, the main reason why I get to be here today is we want to make good on the second installment. So again, less theatrics this year than last year, but the money is just as good as it was before. So we'd like to present you with-
And this time, it's real, not, oh, of course, the other was, too, when Councilwoman was looking at it and figuring to take it home in that box.
That was, that was real cash. This is a real check for one point five million dollars, so.
Wow, are we proud of you.
Mayor, ma'am?
I think it's a great photo op, so let's all get down. Well, let's all get down.
Please. Well, it's yours, so why don't you look?
Well, you've got to take it out. Let's make sure they're clear. They're not loose.
Two signatures for control.
We're all going down.
You know, in Seattle, the owner of that tech company or something just took his million and a half and divided it among all the employees? Could we do that?
Couldn't be that much fair.
Seventy thousand, he gave everybody a base pay of seventy thousand. I thought that was pretty wonderful.
Councilwoman, you must come in here because she got the last bucket of money.
Turn the camera, let's make sure we get it.
And this one has real real. Thirty-one, coming.
Wait, wait, wait.
It's on the front.
He has headed to the social media.
Oh, yeah, you take down some naked ground there.
Uh, who said that? Who said that? Is that you?
That's Mike.
I am. I'm never gonna dump it right now.
Thank you. Are there enough zeros?
We brought Bernetta down here to confirm.
Okay. Have a good time.
Have a good time.
Well, good, thank you.
Hey. Bernetta?
Let me, let me do that. Being that million dollars is gonna be deposited in my board, hold on.
Mayor, while Councilman Barlow is taking a picture of the check, I'd like to recommend that we move item 47 forward for your next item. We have representatives from the library board here, and it'd be nice to take that item out of order so they can get back to business.
Okay, so we will do that. Let us move forward, and let me get Agenda Item 47.
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
On the way, while people are moving into place, I want to say that something in conjunction with the Mob Museum is that Jonathan has in his possession a collection of photographs that I picked up 20-some years ago as an acquisition in my former days as a bookstore owner of antiquarian and rare books and documents. There's a photograph in there of a baby-faced revolutionary named Raúl Castro, he's probably 23 or 24 years old, at the Riviera Hotel in Havana, two months after the Castro brothers took over. And they're meeting with members of our embassy and one guy, Charlie Barron, who used to front for the mob here in town. So things come quite full circle. Now, the next, the president, the existing president of Cuba was supping with the mob to negotiate money to be placed in their hands. It didn't work out, so they closed all the casinos. But that's one of the little nuggets that's hidden away inside the Mob Museum.
So your book is on display in the Mob Museum?
It's, no, no, no. It's part of a collection of photographs in the archives.
Photographs, okay.
They have. I don't know if they've ever exhibited that, but it's of interest since now we have, we're now recognizing Cuba again.
Yep.
And here we are, the Cuban president consorting with mob guys in the casino on the sly in Havana.
Amazing. What goes around comes around. Okay. Agenda Item 47, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding Approval of the Interlocal Contract for the Transfer of Land Between the City of Las Vegas and the Las Vegas Clark County Library District Located at 2601 Sunrise Avenue and 833 North Las Vegas Boulevard, $7 Million Plus Closing Costs Parks and Leisure Activities, Capital Project Fund, CPF. This is from Words 5 and 3, Councilmen Coffin and Barlow. And so, good morning.
Good morning. Scott Adams, Deputy City Manager. What I'd like to do is give you a very brief overview of the terms of the agreement that are the basis of this Agenda Item and transaction. But I, you know, basically what we're doing is exchanging some properties so that we can pave the way for a new branch library in East Las Vegas, and then a new future for the existing former main library on Las Vegas Boulevard. But before I get started, you're gonna see there's quite a few moving parts to a transaction like this. And these don't happen without a lot of wonderful collaboration. And I really have to give a heartfelt thanks to the entire library district team who really working with us, helped make this happen. So my hat's off to Ron Heisen and in particular Steve Rice for really helping work with us to make this kind of a project happen. I also want to thank our transaction team, John Ridilla, Robin Yocum, and Kristi Strong, who, once we got agreement on the terms of this, they really went to work quickly to put the agreements together, get the appraisals done and take care of all the details. So there was a whole team effort on this, and I just wanted to make those acknowledgements.
And we thank you each and all. Thank you very much. I mean, this is exciting news. You're going ahead, please.
Okay.
Mayor, before Scott goes on, he led this effort. I mean, he's throwing a lot of credit to a lot of other individuals, and it takes a team to make this kind of complicated transaction happen. But but for Scott's leadership, his vision, his willingness to work through a very difficult, complex transaction, we wouldn't be here today to celebrate this major milestone for our city.
Congratulations, we're appreciative, Mr. Adams.
Thank you. I, what I'm gonna do is give you a quick overview of the exchange terms, a little bit of information on site deals, and then talk a little bit about what our next steps are. Because this, this is really kind of, in some ways, the easy work is done now, because there's gonna be a lot more that come down the road. What we're doing is essentially acquiring the former main library at 833 Las Vegas Boulevard. Now, we've appraised all the properties in this transaction, and that library appraises at $10.1 million.
May I ask when the appraisal is done?
It's been within the last 12 months, I think. I would say within the last year.
Okay, thank you.
It's taken a little while to get all these terms together and everything, so they've been pretty fresh appraisals as we've moved forward. Our consideration for that acquisition is we, you approve $7 million in the current year capital budget of the city to go towards this project. In addition, we would pledge an exchange of land that we own at 2601 Sunrise Avenue, which is a six-acre site that had been used for years as a former Variety Early Learning Center site that was under the control of the school district, but then due to a reversion interest, came back to the city. That site's since been cleared, so we have a cleared vacant site, ready to go for a potential new branch library. That site's appraised at $677,000. The intent of the transaction is that on the Sunrise Avenue site, the library district would build a new branch to, to provide a branch in a greatly underserved area from the standpoint of library services. That's been, I think, their motivation, and they certainly can speak for themselves in terms of trying to locate a new branch in the centroid of an area that's been pretty dramatically underserved through the years. In the agreement, though, we stipulate that if, we're gonna work in good faith to acquire one of potentially two other sites, where we may swap out one of those sites for the location of the new branch library. As we got into this, the library district did some demographic analysis and determined that the real hotspot for where they're underserved is a little bit north of the Sunrise site. So we made a formal request to the Housing Authority in writing to ask that they explore, and this is not something they can unilaterally make as a decision themselves, they have to go to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, release of one of those sites, which are a little bit bigger, they're about 8.4 acres in size, that we could use as the ultimate site for building the new library. If that happens, and we can get that done by the end of December, we would do that swap out of sites under a separate agreement, because obviously it would involve the Housing Authority, the library, and the city. We would, in, under this agreement, allow the library to continue at their location on Las Vegas Boulevard until their design development and construction is complete on the new library. They would pay their pro-rata operating expenses under this agreement, we would pay for the capital maintenance. There's a reason for that. When we, we struggled, and this was one of the issues we really labored over, is to make sure this was an equal and fair transaction to all the parties. And so when you looked at the appraised value of the library at 833 Las Vegas Boulevard at 10.1, and took away the value that we're exchanging on the Sunrise site, and our city cashier was an unresolved difference. So one of the ways we made up that unresolved difference is pegging a market value lease back at no cost to the library for the three-year period that they would be designing and opening a new branch at whatever new site it happens to be. There's still an unresolved difference, and one of the ways we're gonna resolve that as we move forward, and there's a few more steps for it I'll talk about, is working in good faith to bring new market tax credits into the potential development of the library. This would be a very, very creative use of new market tax credits. And then also bringing into the housing, into the transaction, the potential of a Housing Authority site, which would provide for a much larger site, which would give them significantly more benefit. So going in, there's a little bit of a difference, but we're, we've worked in good faith in our agreement to work with them on those two options to hopefully balance the transaction. So to all parties, it's a win-win all the way around. This is a quick capsule of the location of the Las Vegas, the current library building on Las Vegas Boulevard. There's a picture of it. This is an Antoine Predok building, he's a fairly famous architect. It actually has space in it designed for a museum. If you remember, the former children's museum that moved into Symphony Park was at that location, and there's a very large amount of space in that building that can be used for a museum. The end goal of this is to move the Natural History Museum from where they're currently located across the street into this building upon the vacation by the library district. It would start with occupying that former museum space. And I've said jokingly, if you've been in the Natural History Museum, you see the really big dinosaurs can't stand up straight because they have low ceilings. They're gonna be able to stand up straight in this building, because these are high ceilings, and the space is designed for museum space. So they're gonna have the ability to start with space that gives them the right kind of space, and then grow into more space and become a premier natural history museum that really anchors the cultural corridor downtown. I think the other piece of this is, once they've moved into that building, if you notice, their kitty corner just across the street, I can't use the pointer on this, but directly east or across Las Vegas Boulevard from the library is the Natural History Museum. That site could then be consolidated potentially in the future as part of Cashman Center for any planned redevelopment that might occur at Cashman Center. So part of, you know, that's another piece of this transaction is really starting to vision how we can start to assemble properties and really anchor that part of the end of downtown. At the other end of the transaction, on the end where we would build, where the library district would build a new branch library, is the Sunrise site, that's on the left picture. That's basically at the corner of Sunrise and 28th. In the upper left-hand corner of that picture is the East Las Vegas Community Center, so it's kind of kitty corner behind that center. So it's in an area that has a lot of civic facilities located in it, so it's a natural fit for the array of things that are already there. But then in the right-hand picture are the two sites that are currently controlled by the Housing Authority, there at the vicinity of Bonanza and 28th. And we'd be working with the Housing Authority to acquire one of those two sites ultimately for the actual development of the branch, which puts it, as I said previously, closer into that area where there's a greater underserved population for library services. And then finally, there's a few next steps. As I said, if you approve this agreement today, we're not done. There's other things that have to be done moving forward to make all these things happen. We have to work with the Housing Authority and the US Department of Housing and Urban Development on the release of one of those sites. We've got to finalize a pre-operating and lease agreement with the Natural History Museum for that former library building. We've actually sent a letter to the library district outlining some basic terms and conditions under which they go into the building. They've signed acknowledgement of that letter, so they're ready to go. And they would probably launch over the next two to three years a fundraising campaign to raise the funds to adapt their exhibitory to the new building at the new location. And then finally, we'll be working, as I said previously, with the library district on new market tax credits. We have, as you know, our own credits and our own system in place to provide credits, but should we not have any allocation available at the particular time that we need to make this happen, we certainly have had conversation with potential partners in the state of Arizona and California that control allocations, that have the ability to provide allocations in the state of Nevada. So we would be looking to either provide our own or partner up with other CDEs to bring investors in to help invest in this project. So there's a lot of parts to this transaction, but I think at every end of it, I think everybody comes out a winner on this.
And if I might, where is the school district on this? Any partnership in it, any involvement?
No, there hasn't been. That, I will say that we have been working, as you know, very closely with the school district on preschool development. I think one of the things that, you know, when you look at something like a Variety Early Learning Center that was at that site, we are now working in a real strong partnership with them on developing new preschools, you know, one being at the former Lorenzi Museum site, and then another one potentially at a site we've got under contract on Alta. And those two sites would provide preschool seats that feed directly into some of the underperforming schools that were engaged with the school district on. So we haven't forgotten about the school district in terms of potential partnerships that would replace what actually took place on this site.
Okay, so on all those three sites on the east side, then, Site 1 and 2 with housing as well as the old Variety site?
Right.
That's still a piece of wherever the library ends up. The preschool working with the district.
Well, if we do, if we acquire the, one of the Housing Authority sites, what ultimately might happen is we engage in a swap with the Housing Authority. They still have the burden of having to replace the public housing that was on those two sites with some other suitable alternatives. So we, that's where, there would be, that next step would be a partnership with the Housing Authority to do some kind of swap on sites with them as well.
And today you're just asking for a support to continue to move forward?
Yeah, there's actually an exchange agreement on the agenda. What I've outlined are the terms of that agreement. There is an agreement that outlines how we would exchange properties, the terms and conditions under which the library stays in the former library, and commits to some of these things that I've just discussed on a good faith effort basis.
And I'm gathering, then, as you move forward from this, with the Housing Authority, you will continue to report back where we are and what's happened with them?
Yes, absolutely.
Any comments, questions here before I turn it over to Councilman?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman, I saw Councilman Coffin's hand first, and then yours, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, Councilman Barlow and I are equally proud of what's happened here. Both wards worked together. I want to be, I want to salute Scott, too. I know the city manager did, but if you watched the tape of this program several times, and you read the presentation, and you put the documents down side by side, you will eventually understand what Mr. Adams has been able to accomplish for us. And this is an asset that we won't even own, yet we made it happen, in essence. There's a, there's a trade here. We are the facilitators, and yet we owe so much to everybody else, because it couldn't have been done if a whole bunch of people didn't act in a selfless manner. I think that's fair to say. Scott, we won't operate it. The library district will. And if HUD is giving permission to the Housing Authority, we may be over there too with this library, which we should claim ownership for, if nothing else. Certainly, it's a pride of the east side of town. This is the biggest thing that's happened over there. And I got to go back and thank members of my staff, particularly Felipe Ortiz, who, he and I had our heads together for the last three years trying to find land for parks. It was, what city land is out there that we could put some green on? And you know that only this parcel, well, I'll take it back, there were a couple of parcels along the Wash, three acres each maybe, and that was it. And then Felipe, in discussion with people, found out that the city really owned the land underneath the old Variety School, which were just sitting there, vacant. And their new- this library, which we should claim ownership for, if nothing else. Certainly, it's a pride of the east side of town. This is the biggest thing that's happened over there. And I've got to go back and thank members of my staff, particularly Felipe Ortiz, who, he and I had our heads together for the last three years trying to find land for parks. It was, what city land is out there that we could put some green on? And you know that only this parcel, well, I'll take it back. There were a couple of parcels along the wash, three acres each maybe, and that was it. And then Felipe, in discussion with people, found out that the city really owned the land underneath the old variety school, which was just sitting there, vacant, and the new building had been constructed. So, we entered talks with the school district. They were very happy to, they were, frankly, I think they were a little surprised that we might ask for the land back because I think they probably forgot that, or thought the city had forgotten that 60 years ago, it had given it to the variety school under the stewardship of the, of the school district. And all I knew was, that's land, and we want that land. Then along comes the idea, well, Felipe's serving on the library board. He found out that we're, you know, the library was looking at coming in and serving an area that had been underserved for almost two generations. It's that long. And so, that became the beginning of a courtship that is close to being a marriage here as we approve this today. There's so many thanks to go around. That's one of the reasons the library trust staff and maybe a member of the board are here. I know we have a couple of members of the board on our staff, as Felipe represents my ward on the staff of the, excuse me, on the board. But they're here to witness this and to speak to it, too. We don't have, I don't think we have Housing Authority people here today, too, but they play a role. Anytime you can get three governmental agencies together, including ourselves, and a couple of nonprofits over in Councilman Barlow's ward, to be able to get together and create a synergistic effect. I bubbled over way too much two weeks ago, and now I'm doing it again. The whole point is that we'll either have a library on six acres at 28th and Sunrise, or we'll have a library and a first-class auditorium on eight and a half acres at 28th and Bonanza. So, it's a winner for all of us, and we could be proud. And I guess I want to offer in advance of your votes, thanks to the members of the council for not forgetting the east side of town. This new council, I really believe, pays such close attention now to the areas that were neglected, mentally neglected, financially neglected, just because the growth was always to the west. Everybody wanted to live out there. The land was cheap. The homes were inexpensive. And who wouldn't want to? So, there you are, and the rest of the town was kind of chopped liver because it wasn't exciting. Well, here it is. It's turning. And so, for that reason, we should thank John Hill and Amparo Gamoza of the Housing Authority for their efforts, their quiet efforts. They're not officially here today, and we may see them involved if we move to this other site. So, again, thank you, Scott. It was a complicated transaction. You've said it to me many times. I frankly had to trust you. I swear, I think that if we'd have let you, if you were Scott Adams from Podunk and you came to town and said, "I think I can do something with this Symphony Park site over here. You've got a couple of parcels. Maybe you want a sports team? Let me do it for you," he'd have done it. Probably wouldn't have had to have Cordish or anybody like that. Adams could have done it. So, you're worth your weight in gold as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Adams. You're one of the quiet men in the background behind the city manager who really keep this city moving. And proud of you, proud of all of you guys. Felipe, I hope you're beating with pride back there because you did an awful lot of work on this, coordinating everybody. Thank you, Your Honor. I can't say anything, but hopefully after Councilman Barlow speaks and others speak, that we will vote to approve this item.
Thank you very much, and praise well deserved. Thank you very much, Scott, again, and Councilman Barlow.
I won't say too much, Mayor, because my colleague to my immediate left has said it all. So, I'll just conclude with, I nominate Scott Adams as Citizen of the Month and runner-up, Felipe Ortiz. But I will, in all true honesty, like to thank the Natural History Museum for working with us in this regard, Marilyn Gillespie as the executive director, as well as the Las Vegas Clark County Library District, under the leadership of the executive director, Mr. Hezen, Mr. John Hill from the Regional Housing Authority, and of course, my hat goes off to Mr. Adams for a wonderful job with coordinating all of these efforts. You most definitely have turned a very complicated deal structure into something magnificent, specifically if, in fact, we're able to line up all the stars and make this happen. And so, your efforts most definitely have not gone unnoticed and so forth. I thank you, and I most definitely support your efforts in the process. Thank you.
And therefore, your motion is?
I would like to allow Councilman, if you don't mind, Councilman Coffin, being that he's, he uses a term that I've never heard before in regards to his excitement. I'll have to go look it up in, on Google or Yahoo or possibly even Wikipedia,
What did you say?
depending on if it's in the urban dictionary.
Your Honor?
What did you say?
He used some word. I don't know.
I don't know. Don't say it.
Councilman Coffin has opportunity
Maybe I didn't know what it meant.
every day to make up words. So, sometimes the only place you can find it is in the urban dictionary.
Oh, that's a bad one.
So, I'll go ahead and pass the opportunity, giving him a chance to maintain his level of excitement by casting this vote. Thank you.
There might be other members of the council. Thanks, Councilman. There might be other members of the council who want to speak, too, but I think we'd need to invite the board representatives up here, the library district, to thank them personally. I know, Your Honor, you're looking out for time, but you are to come up here. Ken? Yeah. Come up.
And Mayor, while they're coming up, if I could just briefly congratulate both council members, Councilman Coffin and Councilman Barlow on getting this done. This is a big thing for the east side, and I'm excited for both of them.
And it's doctor, is it not? Are you not a PhD?
Yes, ma'am.
So, it's doctor.
Doctor Hezen.
Yes.
Don't be shy, Doc.
It works hard. Takes a lot of time, energy to get your PhD, so you deserve your title.
Doctor.
It stands for piled higher and deeper.
Okay, Councilman Coffin.
Well, I invited him up to speak, but the cat hasn't. Look, we thank you and your board. You've got a wonderful board.
We do. You know, I think that Councilman Barlow set the standard for a great board, and we've had great board members. Thanks to each of you who have made appointments to that board. I cannot tell you enough how much we appreciate these folks.
I would like to attend your next board meeting to personally thank all your members.
We would love to have you, sir. We'll let you know.
Thank you.
I appreciate getting your newsletter, too.
Thank you. Does any other members want to speak?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I just wanted to say that I share the bubbling over of his enthusiasm. I know how he feels. It gives us a little bit of good feeling today, and I greatly respect all the hard work you've done, every single one of you, HUD, library, everything to get this accomplished. I'll even have to perhaps make sure that we do have our genuine tier left to be, you know, Employee of the Month. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman.
Thank you. Your Honor, I move with great pleasure to move that the council adopt item 47.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. That motion unanimously carries. Thank you again. We're so proud. We're looking forward to this. And thank you, Mr. Adams. And we will now go back to Agenda item 45 and report for possible action regarding a financial overview of the redevelopment recovery plan. This is for wards one, three, and five, Councilwoman Tarkania and Councilman Coffin and Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, for the record, Bill Arntz, Director, Economic and Urban Development. With me this morning is Phil Steckinger. Before leaving off, I wanted to ask a couple of questions. Am I better off today than I was a year ago, three years ago, five years ago? I'm speaking rhetorically, but arguably, this has been the most commonly asked question in households across the Las Vegas Valley over the past five years, and not only in households, but also in corporate boardrooms. And the question is still being asked today. Property values across the Las Vegas Valley dropped significantly over the course of the recession, and while improving, have yet to fully recover. This drop in property values ties directly to a drop in property tax revenues. The Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency is funded from the increase in property tax revenues over the base year of when a redevelopment area first starts. For us, that was back in 1986. Just five years ago, we hit our high watermark for revenue of over $28 million in revenue annually. In fiscal 2014, this revenue dropped to $12.7 million, a 55% drop. This was a big challenge. But I believe that adversity tests character, and your redevelopment team, with the support from our executive team at the city, and of course, your support as well, took ownership of this challenge and has worked tirelessly over the past five years to develop and to implement a solid recovery plan which would position the Redevelopment Agency for long-term sustainability. On behalf of the City of Las Vegas and the Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency, I need to publicly thank our entire EUD team for taking ownership of this challenge and meeting this challenge head-on. I also need to personally thank Mr. Steckinger for his hard work. I also want to thank Betsy Fratwal, our city manager, Deputy City Manager Scott Adams, our Chief Financial Officer Mark Vincent, our Finance Director, Vanetta Appleyard, as well as thank you, Mayor, and City Council for your leadership. I'm confident that you will find the results speak for themselves. The agency is now running annual surpluses, not deficits. The agency has a strong cash position, and perhaps most importantly, the Redevelopment Agency is now seeing substantial year-over-year revenue growth, which positions our agency for long-term sustainability and for continued success. Our assessed values, you know, you've seen these charts, not only from our team, but from Mr. Vincent and Ms. Appleyard, we've experienced drops. We're starting to see the assessed value come back up. You see their current fiscal year 2015, $627 million in assessed value, and then fiscal year 2016, $787 million in assessed value for the Redevelopment Agency. Not shown on this chart is the peak year, which was in excess of $800 million, well above that. So, we're not back to where we were. Correspondently, we're not back to where we were in revenues. Here you see here the trend line for the last five years. We've also shown on this chart not only collected property tax revenues, which of course isn't all the property tax revenue throughout the valley, but just tax revenue for the Redevelopment Agency, also known as tax increment revenue, where we bottomed out, as I mentioned, in fiscal 2014 with 12.7. And for the current fiscal year of 2015, we submitted as part of our tentative budget $14.2 million in revenue. Mr. Steckinger is going to touch on this because we are outperforming our budget estimates based on year-to-date revenues. So, what are we doing? These are really the highlights of our recovery plan. We are anticipating experiencing property tax growth for the agency of 12% year-over-year for a current fiscal year, and that corresponds to an increment assessed value increase looking forward to next year of over 25%. We do not have the final assessed value per the Red Book from the assessor's office, but that shows that revenue will continue growing. And so, we're looking forward to that revenue growth. One subtle piece of our financial picture is the Smith Center for the Performing Arts. The Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency made a big capital investment into the Smith Center. And without that capital investment, it's my belief and our team's belief that that project would not have come to fruition. We would not have seen the project have had the success that it's had with having over a million visitors. But part of that financial investment was a payback provision. The Redevelopment Agency used the majority of our bonds, which were issued in 2009, to support the Smith Center, over $68 million. A portion of that, $20 million, was pledged back to the Redevelopment Agency, not directly from the Smith Center, but indirectly through the car rental tax. The Smith Center had a car rental tax approved by the legislature which allowed the city, through a bond instrument, to put $101 million into the Smith Center. And the Smith Center and the city and the Redevelopment Agency agreed at that time that any excess revenue above and beyond what is needed to service that debt could come back to the agency to help with repayment of $20 million of that $68.8 million capital investment from the agency. I'm happy to report today that this recovery plan shows that we do have excess, and we are beginning repayment of that $20 million. Next, we're looking to utilize historic tax credit repayments from the Mau Museum to partially offset some medium-term debt that we have from the Sanitation Enterprise Fund. Good timing today because you just heard from Mr. Alman that he was delighted to make a payment from the tax credits. The reasoning behind this is that the Redevelopment Agency also made a significant capital investment in the Mau Museum. We invested over $11 million, closer to $11.5 million, into the museum as a capital contribution. While we have not had a contractual obligation of these funds back to the agency, we believe that it's sound fiscal management to have a return of excess funds from the project to one of the capital funders of the museum. And as a capital funder of the museum, we believe that that's good fiscal practice to refund some of those funds back to the Redevelopment Agency. Next, we're looking to restructure the Sanitation Enterprise Fund loan debt service payments. That same loan that I mentioned for the Mau Museum, it was a $15 million par amount on the, and it says loan, it was really a medium-term bond, but it's a debt instrument. Restructure that so that we have a little bit more time to make those debt service payments and push those payments to starting in fiscal '17. Finally, with the biggest outstanding piece of our debt is a bond instrument that was issued in 2009. We'd had a par bond amount of $85 million in 2009. As you saw in the prior charts, the timing was of that bond issuance that was close to our peak. And so, also, at that time, you may recall that in 2009, it was not an ideal time to go to the municipal debt market. In other words, it was a bad time to sell, sell bonds. And so, we believe that there's significant savings to be had for restructuring that bond. And there's a call provision in that bond for the first 10 years of the bonds. So, think from 2009 to 2019. It's not impossible, but very difficult to restructure that. But starting in fiscal '19, we believe that we can restructure that for significant cost savings to the Redevelopment Agency. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Steckinger to conclude the presentation, and then we'd be glad to take any questions. Phil?
Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you, Bill. Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, I'm Phil Steckinger, Asset Manager for Economic and Urban Development. In front of you is a multi-year projection, financial projection in a similar format to what you've seen two years ago, or excuse me, two weeks ago, as presented by our Finance Department. Some of the big takeaways, if you look at not only for, for the continuum over a five-year period, but the biggest one is the comparison where we were at FY '14. We had a $5.5 million shortfall. As presented to you two weeks ago, we're projecting actual excesses, not only for the next couple years, but also for the continuum over the entire five-year period. And one of the things that I think that this puts us in good stead, that we're on our path to sustainability. Some of the highlights that I would like to point out, and Bill touched on these earlier, we're looking at double-digit increases in property tax, not only for the current year, but also for the upcoming fiscal year, which bodes well for the Redevelopment Agency. One thing he did also touch on is the $14.2 million that was submitted as part of our tentative budget. That was submitted at that point in time. One of the things, we've looked at collections through the first three quarters, and we've increased by double digits for every single quarter. Even in this final quarter, if we're flat, we're on pace to end up with about $14.8 million for the current fiscal year. During briefings, one of the things we touched on is we wanted to present you a very conservative financial picture to make sure. It's always better to give you a conservative picture to make sure that what is in front of you is presented in that light. One other thing that really bodes well, and Bill touched on this one also, is the repayment of the Performing Arts Center. We have that in this projection, starting FY '16 at $600,000 per year. This is expected to ramp up over the next few years. Probably will provide a sustainable revenue source, not only for this five years, but probably five to seven to 10 years out. So, I think that bodes well. As far as the expenditure side of life, one of the things, if you look at from 2014 to 2015, our debt service was reduced by $1.4 million a year. That is the retirement of 2003, 2000 A and B loans of $1.4 million. As highlighted also, one of the things with the plan on a going-forward basis is we're looking to restructure the sanitation looking to restructure the Sanitation Enterprise Fund. Starting FY '17, our debt service payment would have been about $3.5 million. With doing the restructure, it'll be $1.5 million per year, a savings of $2 million. And Bill also touched upon, the last one, is to extend the useful life of the RDA and restructure the debt starting in 2019 after the call provisions met. I would like to, before leaving this slide, I'd like to touch just on one other thing. Bill mentioned the low watermark where we were. Our actual debt service exceeded our revenues for last year. We were actually below one times coverage. Now, we're at 1.61% coverage as defined by Standard &amp; Poor's. And if you look in the out-years, we expect that that coverage level to actually increase, which really bodes well going forward. The last thing I'd like to touch on just before leaving this slide is the ending fund balance. During the presentation that we had given to you slightly over a year ago, Councilman Beers, as well as Councilman Tarkanian, made a very apropos comments or questions. When you're looking at fund balance, not all of that is actually spendable. They had asked how much we actually have in cash. We have an $8.5 million reserve for debt service, but as far as what we have available to spend, if you look at '14, we actually dipped basically at 2/3 of our reserves down to a low watermark of $3.5 million. This slide shows that we're on our way back up. In fact, by the end of next fiscal year, we'll probably have recovered almost 2/3 of that amount, although we're not out of the woods yet. The final slide that we have is recently of great news, is that we received a bond reading upgrade from Standard &amp; Poor's. We're upgraded from a BBB minus to a BBB. I wanted just to share on this final slide with some of the things that they had mentioned. It had the positive trend in assessed value growth, also the unrestricted cash reserves plus $7.3 million, it's in CP5, a fully funded cash debt service review of $8.5 million. And then also, as I had mentioned earlier, it had the debt service coverage ratio which had increased rapidly over the last couple of years. That concludes our presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Steckinger, and thank you, Mr. Art. Could we have copies of that? Or at least of the back?
Absolutely, Mayor. We have it queued up with KCLB, and we can certainly make copies available to you, and it's
Appreciate it.
...being presented as part of the public records, so we'd be glad to make copies available to the audience or the public
Thank you.
...as well. This is a report, so no action is required, but
Questions.
...we're here to take any questions or
Any questions?
...listen to any comments you have.
Councilman Beers, please.
I'm curious why our property tax revenue can recover as well and as quickly as it is with the cap that the 2004 legislature placed on increases in property tax.
Thank you, Councilman, again for the record, Bill Arnt. There is a chilling effect, as you accurately point out, on the property tax cap. And I think we were showing a projection of 25% AV growth, but we're not showing that corresponding level of growth in revenue. So, they're really, I think I would highlight it to show the distinction between the assessed value growth and the revenue, they're not tracking one-for-one growth. It is different. And so, we were looking at, for FY '16, year-over-year, an assessed value increase, and again, this is projected, it's not final with the assessor yet, but 25%, we're looking at property tax growth of 12%. So, there is a distinction there, there is a difference where they're deviating. As we start to get back towards historic revenues, we believe that delta's going to start to shrink, and it's kind of deals with the nature of tax increments. So, we benefit on the way up with a rising property base, but we're hurt on the way down. And so, the idea of tax increment is anything above and beyond your base year revenues. And so, if revenues are falling, our revenues not only fall, but they fall disproportionately. And so, I think that really highlights it. We think that on its face, that double-digit growth does seem aggressive. But we have studied this very closely with the County Assessor's Office. We've worked very closely with our city finance team, and we're confident in this projection. I think a question, behind the question is, is it sustainable? And so, we haven't showed as aggressive growth in the out-years, but those future out-years as far as revenue growth is something we're going to be monitoring very closely.
Through that, through that data stream that you get, can you Because the thing that comes in outside that cap is new construction, comes in at market, right?
That's correct.
So, can you parse out a percentage of new construction AV growth for the downtown area?
I think so. So, the new construction value does come on at full value, but the way the assessor does it, so of course, it's a Marshall &amp; Swift appraisal guide, which doesn't reflect actual dollars to construct or full market value, but it is getting new value. I think one thing we can do, and I'll have to spend some time with city finance to confirm this, but I think we can sort through the data on the new improvements because there is a supplemental value that's added to the rolls. In other words, as construction is happening, the assessor goes out and appraises the property and puts a partial value, and then when it's complete, puts a full value. So, I think there is a way to extract that. We have looked at that in the past, but I don't know that we've done a real rigorous analysis, but we could certainly take a look at that. I don't know, Phil, if you have anything else to comment on that?
Mayor and Council, Councilman Beers, to answer your question, we could provide you the best information that we have. We do have some information on that. Also, I did want to touch on too, and Bill did a nice job of going through this, as far as on the way down, if you look at, we're just one of the recipients of property tax. There's what is called a base that is in there up front. The base stays stagnant, so in the down-years, they didn't suffer, they still maintain the base of what the other entities received prior to. So, the redevelopment agency basically took the whole hit, or by far, the largest hit of that. I guess the good news is on the upside of what we're seeing now. Instead of increasing by a cap amount, let's say of 3%, 3.2%, 4%, whatever that would be, we're actually almost getting doubled because that base stays stagnant. And our percentage, as far as doing a detailed analysis, we believe what is in front of you is pretty accurate and actually probably a little bit on the conservative side.
Thank you. And attributable to houses being sold, older houses, not new development, whether they were flipped, but they're occupied now, had been foreclosed upon, anything in there of those coming back on market?
Thank you, Mayor. We're, for the record, Bill Arnt, we're hyper-focused, as you know, on the redevelopment agency, which is downtown and some of our periphery neighborhoods outside of downtown. For our redevelopment area, it has a higher share of commercials, so we haven't focused as closely on residential. But certainly, there is a, there are different caps for whether it's residential owner-occupied versus residential, not owner-occupied. Interestingly, as I believe Mr. Vincent has discussed at recent meetings, that the formula for the commercial rate is actually trended down to where it's almost identical to the residential rate. So, they're very close to each other at around, residential being 3%, I believe commercial is just over. Where it can cap at 8%, but it's by a formula, which are, you have to run three formulas out, and it won't bore everyone to tears with those formulas, but the outcome of the formula for the commercial is it's about 3. So, I think Councilman Beers had an astute observation that if we are experiencing growth over that 3%, it means it's something other than just the existing properties going up in value. Something else has to be happening. There is new construction. We don't see these huge mega projects in our redevelopment area.
But what we are seeing
But we see a lot of small projects, a lot of tenant build-outs. We do see some big projects moving forward. We see the Federal Justice Tower, which is going up, starting to hit the tax rolls. We see other projects that are hitting the tax rolls. Certainly, a lot of what downtown project has done has benefited us from a revenue perspective. So, we do aggressively track that, particularly the new construction, because that's something we can control, or at least influence. That's our job to get new projects on the tax roll, get new construction out of the ground and moving. And so, that's something we're tracking very closely.
The other piece is, knowing that during the recession, many of the high-rise condominiums were put into rental situation, they're now back on the market as full buyout condominiums. So, as those project out and you get the property tax on the buy there, and those are high-rises.
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent observation. We're tracking that. We could see a bump just because of that. We're seeing Juul being in the process of converting back to condos, and then the Ogden doing the same. And for sale units, implicitly, you're going to carry a higher value than rental units. And so, because they're going on the books for the sale value, not for a replacement value of what it costs to construct. And that difference is margin and profit for the current owner of the property, but that could be a significant revenue boost for us looking at the years ahead.
Thank you. Well, the news sounds good. And any other questions, yes, Councilman Barlow?
Thank you. Mr. Arnt, I see that the revenues are projected to be $15.8 million. Would you also speak to the $3.6 million operations, the $11.4 million in debt, and the $2.3 in, I believe you have there for the program expenditures? If you can just break that out a little bit for me so that I'll have a level of understanding of what's behind those numbers.
Certainly. Thank you, Councilman. And this is a collapsed projection for the purposes of presentation. So, this does match the tentative budget, but it, for the purposes of presenting it, it's not a line item. So, there are some items that roll up into these numbers, so I'll walk you through it. For operations, it's a little bit of a misnomer. It's not only operations, it's really everything's associated with overhead. So, it's our staffing cost, salaries and benefits. It's all of our services and supplies are overhead. We pay for office space at City Hall, we pay for other supplies. It's our all-in cost of doing business as far as operating the agency. We believe that that's an appropriate expenditure level, given the size of the agency and our budget. Debt service is what it says, it's all debt service. We broke out tax increment financing separately. The reason we did this is if you look at our schedule of indebtedness, both in our budget that goes to taxation that you approved, but then the year-end financials, the CAFR, our debt service technically does not include the tax increment financing notes, those taxes that we pledge back to some of our large projects, World Market Center, Las Vegas Premium Outlets, Malaski Corporate Center, Simon Properties, Vialor. Those are, we listed separately, and they're not listed on our official indebtedness because they're in a limited indebtedness, meaning we don't have a debt to pay, we're simply, to the extent we get revenue in through taxes, we're pledging back. So, it doesn't impact our debt obligation. It is money we have to pay back, so it is an expenditure, but it's not quite the same as debts. We broke that out separately. The debt primarily is that 2009 bond that I mentioned, the $85 million bond. That represents that specific one over $9 million in annual debt service payment. So, nearly all, not all, but most of that debt service is tied to that bond. The other debt service component is that $15 million medium-term loan from the Sanitation Enterprise Fund. So, you put those two together, and that line the debt service, so for FY '16, 10.1, that represents those two payments. Program expenditures is really the lifeblood of the agency. This is the VIP program. This is marketing to continue to try to draw new businesses into the city and into downtown. It's everything that's needed to try to drive business and drive investment forward. It's spending money on trying to get sites ready for redevelopment. So, that program expense line, you see, there is some variation year-to-year, and it really ties to the work program that we put before you and ask for your support on implementing for the upcoming year.
The $85 or $89 million bond that you referenced, which bond is that?
So, it was an $85 million bond. There was about a little over $75 million in net proceeds. That was a bond that the redevelopment agency issued in 2009. $68.8 million, actually, to be precise, $68,780,000 went to the Smith Center. The balance went into infrastructure at Symphony Park, but the lion's share went into the Smith Center. And of course, we know that as the legacy project that it's come to be, and helps with so many things that we do, from recruiting businesses at the corporate level to getting developers committed and moving forward and developing and investing in Symphony Park. That really has been one of the linchpin projects that we've been, we think is going to continue to help us moving ahead.
Thank you for the update. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Madam Beers?
Yes, please, Councilwoman.
I'm still concerned about the medical district and where the RDA goes. We, you know, stop right at the beginning of a hospital, then we end right at the end of the hospital. It's sort of a gap in between, which doesn't seem logical. And I was told that we were making steps to change that. What are those steps, and how long are they going to take? You know, we've been about three years now on developing what the medical district is. I just think about time that we know.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Good point.
We are going to be bringing back at a later date, re-upping the plan to include the existing Las Vegas Medical District and potentially some of the expansion area into the redevelopment area. You're right, it is one of those gaps that we've clearly identified that we have to do for a lot of reasons. We are going to move forward with that. That's not part of today's action, but we are committed to doing that, and we're working very closely with our Betsy Fratwal City Manager, with Scott Adams, and we're committed to doing that, and we believe that there's no reason that we won't get that done by the end of the calendar year.
Well, oh, that's good. The other thing is, in the past, we've given cash or loans to the Smith Center. It's done very well. To the Mau Museum, and it's done very well. Is there any consideration perhaps to help the new medical school?
Absolutely. We're looking very
Because as far as I know, nobody has talked about this, and I think it's important to look at because it's probably as important as any one of the other two or others that we've done that for.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I agree completely. That is an excellent project that will yield dividends in so many different ways. Medical jobs are some of the highest-paying jobs in our entire community. We are looking very closely at that, looking at all resources we have available. We're looking at our parking team, can we help in the area of parking? Redevelopment, which helps in infrastructure. New Markets Tax Credits, which we're aggressively pursuing, and, you know, we've helped a project in the Councilman's Ward in the historic West Side get over the finish line, and that one had been stuck for a while, quite frankly. And with the Councilman's leadership and support of the New Markets Credits, we got that over the finish line. So,
Well, could we perhaps
We think all the above, that all the above resources are going to be needed, not just for the school, but to keep going after that, all the things that we want to accomplish in the medical district. Perhaps we can come at a future board meeting and give you a more exhaustive update on kind of our strategic thinking about where we're at and where we're headed.
The interest in the area on Charleston by people who want to buy property is starting to pick up. It's really starting to move now. My concern was that perhaps if we gave a financial consideration, as we've done for some of these other projects, that it might entice other people to join in, other government entities perhaps. But I can talk with Betsy and you about that, and then before we have a board meeting on it, then perhaps we'll know where we are. Unless you want to have it in the board meeting, it doesn't matter to me, but I just thought if we had that previous meeting, it would help.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll definitely follow your direction, and I think the takeaway here in today's report is we're in a position to do those things again. We're in a financial position to start investing in important projects. We've been kind of forced to the sidelines for the last couple of years because of our budget picture. And so, we've tightened our belts, we've managed our cash position, we're restructuring some of our long-term debt obligations, but we're now in a position now to actually But we're now in a position now to actually not just talk about those things, but do those things. And so, that, that's really the big takeaway here. We haven't been up until early this point.
That's good. I'd love to have you started. That would be really good, because, you know, for a long time, we've heard it's going to be coming, and it hasn't, so I'll be very, I'll be as excited as he was when you do that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Putting that into the redevelopment district, isn't that not a legislative act?
It's an act for this body, so we can do that through a process that's outlined in state law. There's several steps. The Councilwoman's correct, we actually took some of these steps already, and we took a pause because of some of the important things that we've been working on, both from the budget side, but also on the project side, wanting to make sure that we keep the projects that we have now moving forward, moving forward. We're ending that pause. We want to get that process re-engaged and get the district firmly embedded in the redevelopment area, which will open up redevelopment resources, and we believe there are other resources to bear that will help as well.
So, it's something can be enacted by the city without having to go back to the legislature?
The City Council is final action for, for those items.
Because everything that we've heard from the committee on the medical district is looking very seriously, almost conclusively, to locating in the heart of Ward One there. So, I would assume that we need to move that as rapidly as we can and make it a public information.
I, I would agree.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? A motion, if I could, a Councilwoman or Councilman to accept the report?
Move to accept the report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion to accept the report? Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And Agenda Item forty-six, and thank you, Mr. Sekinger. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Purchase-Sale Agreement Between City Parkway Five Inc., CPB, and Three Star Auto Body and Paint Inc., Three Star for Purposes of Business, Retention, Expansion, Job Creation Totalling Approximately Point Fifty-Five Acres of Vacant Land Located Along Bonanza Road, Which is Part of the Three-O-One West Mesquite Avenue. This is Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. This item is related to Agenda Item fifty-one.
Thank you, Mayor. In the interest of time, if, if it meets with your approval, I'd like to call Item fifty-one, so that we could hear that concurrently, and then you can take action on each item.
Fine, thank you. Agenda Item fifty-one, our twenty-one-two-oh-one-five Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Finding the Proposed Sale of Vacant Land to Three Star Auto Body and Paint Inc., Three Star Totalling Approximately Point Five-Five Acres Located Along Bonanza Road. That is part of Three-O-One West Mesquite Avenue is for the Purpose of Economic Development and Redevelopment, Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. And as just mentioned, this item is related to Agenda Item forty-six.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the Council, for the record, Bill Arndt, Economic and Urban Development. This item before you today is a purchase and sale agreement for a piece of property which is already under a lease agreement with a business that's doing businesses, Three Star Auto Body and Paint. And they've been in business now in, at this location, and in Ward Five since 2002. Since 2005, we've been in a month-to-month lease, and it is difficult on my screen to see this, but I think on the large overhead screens, it's probably easier. I'm not sure if, our communications seem consumed on that, but the red, the, the property that's cross-hatched in red is the subject property which is under the lease. The reason we did it this scale is you see here, the business itself and the adjacent use. So, this is just a small ancillary piece of real estate which is going to help the business to expand. Over time, our, the Three Star has taken over more auto body repair work, and has been expanding its work, and wants to take on new contracts for large commercial vehicles. And instead of relying on a month-to-month lease, they'd rather own the property that they're leasing from us. And so, to eliminate uncertainty of the month-to-month lease term, they've offered to buy the property from us, and they've offered to pay us high appraised value. The reason for the Item fifty-one, the resolution, is that even if with our client offering high appraised value, if we do not put the property through an auction process, we still have to show a finding for the purposes of redevelopment or economic development. The high appraised value is one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for this property, and they've agreed to that purchase price. To help the business continue to grow, we've offered terms for payment of the purchase price as follows. Twenty-four thousand dollars down, which is twenty percent of the purchase price, a loan amount of ninety-six thousand dollars, which is the balance of the purchase price, or eighty percent. We would have a promissory note and a deed of trust and be in a first position on the land. We would charge interest rate of nine percent, which we believe is a market rate for a loan of this type. The term of the loan would be seven years, fully amortized. Our partner would be able to prepay the loan, should they choose. As part of consideration for this, Three Star has agreed to install improvements on the site. Decorative permanent security fencing and landscaping along Bonanza Road, permanent security fencing along the east and south perimeters of the site. And we realize that this location is really kind of a transition area between commercial and higher-density mixed use, and commercial and light industrial, and even some heavy industrial, and then not too far from here is residential community. So, we really appreciate Three Star being a good partner and wanting to put the fencing in and the other improvements. If for some reason they can't put these improvements in within twelve months, we get to accelerate our note and make it do and painful immediately. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the business owners. Delighted to introduce Mr. Ben Peralta Senior and Mr. Ben Peralta Junior, and I'll let them explain which one is which.
Hello, I'm Ben Peralta Junior. This is my father, Ben Peralta Senior.
Oh, you're welcome.
We run the shop over there.
It's wonderful. You're doing so well that you're going to want to expand. Great.
Yeah, we see the whole area is getting better, and all of Vegas is getting nicer, better. Everything is, everything's really moving, you know?
Are you born and raised here?
Uh, since eighty-nine.
Okay, what high school?
Gorman.
Okay. Good for you. You got a gale down there. Great. Could I interrupt before you make any comments? The property to the east and south of the Red Hatch, is that city property as well, or is that privately owned?
Uh, the property to the east and the south is city property. We actually own it through an affiliate company. It's a nonprofit we created for holding real estate in and around this area, City Parkway Five Inc. It's hard to see on this aerial, but you can see just at the bottom or to the south of the parcel, adjacent to the red parcel, where you see some vehicles parked, you see a line that's kind of grayed out, and it's, goes diagonally to the up and right. That's actually an active rail spur. Union Pacific Railroad has a rail spur, actually dumps into the Review Journal. That has made developing this site challenged. Further challenging this site, Bonanza Road, if you're familiar with this area, the gray changes drop, uh, the gray changes, and it drops quickly to get under the underpass, under the railroad. In additional, south of the, the rail spur, there's limited sewer, and because of the gray change, the sewer would have to ride. So, all these things complicate development of the property. We still think it's a good holding for us, and helps us get some good uses in here to, again, be a good business buffer between high-density commercial, some lower-density but attractive industrial and manufacturing. So, we think it's a good use, and we think our business partner is a good business for this area.
Thank you. And did you want to make any comments, Mr. Peralta, about?
Well, just seeing what Councilman Barlow's done with the area, and all of you with the rest of Vegas and downtown, just every part has given us confidence to, you know what, let's do something else, let's do something bigger. Let's, let's hire some more people, let's get some more guys in here, let's, let's do something. You know, let's approach more companies. You know, they come here, they, to our location, they go downtown and eat, they hang out. We want that. We want people coming, hanging out and all that. The areas become safer. You know, it's, it's, it's just the, only the right thing to do for us. To try to do this, the, the fact that that paper exists means the world to us, you know, that you guys are even considering this.
No, we love you doing well.
It's a big deal to us.
It's great. We love it, and you're ahead of the future.
For our future, for our kids, everything.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. And I thank the applicant for growing your business, because it only helps the community overall. So, I know that the site that we currently own is a very complicated site to develop.
Yeah, it's weird.
Yeah, it's very weird, in the sense of the railroad spur that exists. As you continue to expand, maybe you will grow that much more to buy us out of the rest of the parcels of land moving forward.
Yeah, we were hoping that. That's a dream, like, maybe, you know?
Right. So, it'll, it'll be there for you. So, I, I am in support of your, the, the expansion. I know a number of people that have gone and had their vehicles repaired at your location, and so you're very well reputable in the community, so. And I like to do business with individuals that do nice, clean business as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Because it only, you know, makes the entire business, um, community reflect in a good, in a good light. So, I support the item moving forward for approval, subject to all conditions, and let me know if there's anything that I can do to continue to assist you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Good luck to you.
So, that's a motion, I gather?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, there's a motion. Please vote, and then please post. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mayor, thank you. With your permission again, for the record, Bill Arndt, if you could call for a motion on, or through the Councilman for Item fifty-one.
Yes, please.
And on Item fifty-one, I'll move to follow Sess's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Motion on fifty-one?
Thank you so much.
And vote, and please post. That also carries unanimously. Good job. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Arndt. Appreciate that. And forty-seven, we have already handled. Agenda Item forty-eight, Discussion for Possible Action to Approve a New Pistol Permit License. James Hung, DBA Gun Runner Eight LV at seventeen-seventeen South Decatur Boulevard, Booth I-Dash-Sixteen-A. And that's James Hung owner, and this is in Ward One with Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Your Honor. Again, for the record, Karen Duddleston, representing Business Licensing. This is for a pistol permit located at seventeen-seventeen South Decatur, which is inside of the swap meet at that location. The qualifier for this applicant is a sporting goods store specializing in long guns and handguns. The background investigation of the individuals was completed by Metro and returned with a report of no areas of concern on this applicant. However, under your Title X, the sheriff is to review the pistol permit applications and provide a recommendation to the City Council. In looking through the application for this location, we requested a copy of the security plan, as this is inside of a very populated building, and worked with Metro. I believe Metro has a recommendation at this time for you.
And if you'd be sure to announce yourself, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. Ms. DePence, Lieutenant with the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department's Special Investigation Section. As Ms. Duddleston said, we had no areas of concern when we conducted our initial background investigation. However, upon reviewing the actual proposed location, as well as the safety plan submitted by the applicant, we do have some areas of concern. Initially, the proposed location is a public safety concern for us. As you know, it's the fantastic swap meet at Decatur and Oke. It is a large structure with several businesses within that one individual structure. It attracts large crowds of people, to include families with young children and elderly. It's my understanding also that currently the city does not have, has not granted any pistol permits at any other swap meets, so this would be the first of its kind. Additionally, some of the areas of concern are regarding the safety plan that we reviewed, and specifically, the fact that the cameras, the security cameras and the security guards are not controlled by, owned, or employed by the applicant. They are in fact controlled by, owned, and employed by the swap meet, so they have no obligation to meet the requirements of the safety plan of this individual applicant. And as you know, it's, it's Metro's responsibility to ensure the safety of our community, and for those purposes and the stated security concerns, at this time, we do not endorse the granting of this pistol permit.
Okay, thank you very much. And sir, would you like to comment before I turn it over to Councilwoman?
Sure. Thank you. My name is James Hung. And in order to address that, that safety, is that we don't carry ammunition in the store. There's no ammunition anywhere near the firearms, so if that were the case, the firearms are all useless. There's, you know, and I've had somebody approach me and say, well, what if somebody brings in their ammunition? Well, if that was the case, any gun enthusiast would know that every weapon has a certain magazine type, has a certain caliber and such and so forth. And history has shown that if somebody were to rob or burglarize a place, they'd usually bring their own weapons. They don't bring tools to, you know, take the weapons, you know, so on and so forth. But like I said, we had that concern, and there's no ammunition allowed anywhere near the firearms. I don't sell ammunition off-site. It's not stored on-site. There's nothing like that. So, that's, that's what we, we came up with a solution for that problem. And we also, we're, we install our own security cameras. Yes, the security guards aren't employed by us, but we have our own safe that's under lock and key, that's not available from the public. That's where all the weapons are stored at night and during non-operational hours. So, that's, that was my solution for that issue. But I just wanted to add that, in opening a store like that, it was to, it's not, my goal isn't to sell as many guns as possible to as many people as possible, it's to educate, especially new shooters. Before I did this, I, I educated new shooters. Shooting has been a recreational sport for a very long time, and in the city of Las Vegas, it's, it's being, it's beginning to grow more and more, especially with North Decatur Shooting Complex. And I just want to, I just want to be a part of that. So, that's all I have to say.
If I might, before I turn it over to Councilwoman or anybody else who has questions, in addition to the firearm, is there anything else that you already sell at that location?
Uh, I sell just, uh, basic tactical gear. I sell, you know, backpacks and gun cases, stuff like that. But yeah, I.
You do already sell that, and you have your location?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And the other question is, in selling these, were that granted, which I don't know, what the recommendation's going to be? Do you do background checks when?
Absolutely. I abide by all federal and state law. ATF, when they inspected my place, we had concerns, the exact same concerns, and we talked about it with my ATF representative, and we came up with that solution, the one I mentioned about no ammunition, the gun stored a certain way, has to be, you know, attached to the actual structure of the building, bolted down. And, you know, ATF, they, they've helped me a lot, and that was their, you know, solution to that issue. So, they did issue that FFL, which then in turn, I, when I got my business license, I had to set up an account with Nevada Public Safety to do background checks on every person that, you know, decides to buy a, a gun, unless they have a CCW, of course.
Okay. Um, the, my last question would be, do you have your own security cameras on your booth, or no?
Yeah, on my booth and in the.
Your own cameras?
Right. But the thing is, when the hearing was in place, I was going to install them, but I haven't yet, so I don't want to waste that.
You do not have them yet?
No, not, not right now.
Okay, because you may not get the permission, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Councilwoman?
Hi, James, nice to see you again. And James, you know how much I appreciate your entrepreneurship and how hard you've worked. But when I spoke with you, I told you I was surprised when you had told me that Metro had come out and it was all right, because there were some things that I hadn't heard Metro do before, so I said I wanted to get a clear Metro evaluation. Could I ask Metro, what is the feeling about the ammunition, not having any ammunition? Is that a media rate to any extent a concern, or not?
That's, that's something that, that we think is a good idea, however, just the mere fact that it's an open business that attracts large crowds, to include families and children and elderly, like I stated before, is a concern for us.
So, it'd still be a concern?
Yes.
All right. And the background. All right. And the background check, I think I spoke a little bit with you. I worked in the school district a long time. I was on their board for a long time. And during that time, I found that they who had several people doing background checks, often there were things they didn't catch that they should have caught. And I think we've seen some of them in the papers even now, that they have. So, I have a big concern about that. And I had a concern, you know, that you were at the corner. You had the corner booth, and there's a lot of people pushing and coming through there, because they're going not just to where yours would be, but they're going to others. And it's not that I have any feelings against what you're saying, but it's the feeling that I have that supports what Metro said. And that's having it in a large area with a lot of people around, and nobody really controls that area. You may have a guard someplace. I didn't see anyone I was there in those areas. So, I would have to move to deny.
Can I add something real quick? To address that, well, I'm so sorry. I was focused on what you're saying. On the corner right there, where people are pushing and shoving, I don't have any firearms there for that reason. I did notice that before. So, all the firearms are on the other side and out of people's reach. We did take all of that into consideration. Also, about 10 years ago, a good family friend of ours did have a gun store in the swap meet before. And he was there for about 10 years. And if we're talking matters about, you know, being in a public space and whatnot, I don't quite understand how this would be much different from, you know, anything you would buy at Walmart or anything you'd buy, you know, at a big box store that happens to sell guns and ammunition in the same place. I myself have bought a firearm from Walmart before, a long rifle. And they let me buy ammo and gun, and they let me walk out. So, and they don't have security there all the time either. Actually, in fact, that place is mostly unmanned most of the time. And they have ammunition. They have shotgun shells just sitting on the shelf. They have hundred-round birdshot you can just buy off the shelf. And, you know, I've taken all that into consideration, but I don't understand how that would be any different from a big box store.
And I can understand how you might not understand, but there's a big difference. I go to Walmart, and I go to the swap meet also.
Sure.
And there's a whole different feeling when I'm in Walmart. The lanes are larger. You're not bustling so much with other people. It's sort of more confusing than it is in Walmart. In other words, you don't know who's next to you. You don't know what someone might be doing. And when you said you're not selling them on the side, you're only selling them in front. But that front meets the side, and a person just coming around there. So, I just, that's how I feel. I'm sorry, but that's how I feel. So, I moved to deny.
Okay. And comment, please, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilwoman, if you would indulge me for a minute. Mr. Hung, I know you went through a great deal of work to get your federal firearms license. And I know that's not an easy thing to do. So, you've got an expense already in this. I would recommend to you, because I'm going to support the Councilwoman, I have a hard time just wrapping my head around that swap meet type environment for gun sales as well. I would recommend to you, because you are quite the entrepreneur to be doing business to begin with, is to look for bricks and mortar. Look for some tenant space, because you don't want this to go to waste. And I think, once you resolve that issue, I think you're going to be in good shape. But I'm going to support the Councilwoman. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comment? Okay, there's a motion, please, on Agenda item 48. Please vote, and please post. Unfortunately, it's denied. But I would certainly echo what Councilman Ross has said, to look for a bricks and mortar location where the control would be better.
And I would back that, too, because we have many places not far from that area that have smaller, little brick and mortar where you could go.
Could I add something real quick? The reason why I didn't do that in the first place was because ATF, in order to get your FFL, if anybody's familiar, but you need to have a location already. So, I had to pay a lease, and I couldn't sell anything. I couldn't sell any accessories or anything like that. I had to wait until my FFL was cleared. Most of the distributors that do sell that kind of gear, they require an FFL. So, that's why I didn't sign a lease like that. It took me seven months to get that license. So, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming before us.
Good luck.
Agenda item 49, discussion for possible action to approve a new pistol permit license. LAD TAC Arms LLC DBA Bunkers AD at 3401 Sirius Avenue, Suite Number 35. Aaron Matthew Stevens, managing member, again in Ward 1 with Councilwoman Tarkanian. Ms. Duddleston, please.
Thank you. For the record, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. Again, the sheriff in his office, officers returned a report of no area of concerns on this applicant. They also reviewed the security plan, the location. This is a separated suite, and noted no areas of concern on those documents as well. But they are here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Would you like to introduce yourself, sir?
Hello. For the record, my name is Aaron Stevens with LAD TAC Arms. Thank you for having me here today. I am applying for the pistol license. It is a large part of the firearm sales, the sales market in the firearms business. And I do need this to continue growing my company. And it is as simple as that.
Okay, thank you. And Officer, did you...
We had no areas of concern. I'm just here in case you have any questions, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Counts, yes? Yes, please. Councilman Barlow.
Yes. Where's the major cross street? I've been trying to look at it on my backup.
The major cross street would be Valley View and Sirius area.
Okay. Is that across from the 7-Eleven? Are you on the east side or the west side?
I'm a little further down from the 7-Eleven.
Going south?
It'll be east of Valley View.
Okay, so east of Valley View, but south of the 7-Eleven?
Yes.
Okay. And is it a standalone, or are you...
It is a office warehouse within a larger building. It is a standalone brick and mortar.
But the ingress egress is solely your business, or are you in a bigger warehouse where there's other businesses under one roof?
Yes.
There it is, on your monitor.
Okay. And you see, if you can just point out, if you come to the middle microphone, and just point out to me, if you will, the ingress egress of all access points.
Okay. There is one personal door.
Is that the exit in the back?
This is the front, actually. This is Sirius. There are offices, my, this isn't accurate. My office is only half of this. There's a store in back of me on Sirius Avenue. I'm sort of behind the building. And there is a roll-up door for the warehouse right next to the entrance.
So, everything, everything in front of the line to your front doors is your...
Yes.
Is your office. Is there a back door to enter?
There is no back door.
Okay, so there's only one door?
It's a solid brick. Yes.
And your back wall, inside of the office, is solid brick?
The back wall is, I don't know if it's, it is solid. I don't know if it's actually brick, but the two sides are cement.
Okay. But my concern is the penetration from the back wall, because I don't know what business is on the backside of that wall.
I believe it's a, I believe it's a furniture store right behind me. I've never walked around and said hi to them as of yet. But it is a, it's not, I don't know if it's brick or not, but it is a solid wall.
Okay. And from a security standpoint, how do you protect the weapons that are being proposed?
They are under lock and key. I do have a large safe, five-foot tall, 600-pound safe. I do have video cameras on-site, which do stream to a separate location via the Internet, ADT. And that is, it would, for me, it would seem very difficult to, like, get into my place, unless they had the, you know...
Do you have glass on the facade of the entrance of your building?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any bars behind that glass, or is it just glass?
I do have the bars. I'm putting up, I just got the bars.
The interior or the exterior of the building?
Interior.
The interior of the building? So, when you lock up your entire facility, you have the glass, and then you have the cage, the bar cage to the interior?
Yes.
To include the entrance door?
Yes.
And when do you plan on having that in place?
By at least tomorrow or the next day.
Okay. And I'm not sure if the maker of the motion will condition that for protective measures, security measures, because I understand also that, is that social services on the corner, Karen, of his facility?
It would be a social service provider of some sort. We can check on what that is, but it could be a variety of things.
Okay.
In that location.
Yeah. I'm familiar with it. I believe that the location is most definitely an appropriate location. But just from a security standpoint, I want to make sure, for at least my level of security and you moving forward, that those measures are in place, so that your office won't be penetrated as easily.
Yes. My cameras are very good. They do have motion sensing. They are, you know, they have the IRA, infrared, to, you know, seeing at night. They alert me to any movement within, you know. And the ATF does tell me, you know, if anything happens, you are a licensee. You are not law enforcement. Contact law enforcement if anything such as that happens. I don't put it past people. We are amazing creatures. We can get ourselves into just about anything. So, we, I believe, you know, we've set up enough security to deter, at the most, anyone wanting to try anything such as that.
Let me ask you this question. As far as your sales experience, what is your sales background? And secondly, is this the first time that you are operating a gun store?
Yes, this is my first business, actually, my first gun store. I am licensed. As far as sales, I am bringing in my stepfather shortly. He is the sales manager. He will be the sales manager, and he's very good. So, as far as sales myself, I need improvement. You know, I need to go out there and talk to more people instead of, basically, I've been filling out a lot of forms recently. So...
So, in other words, you're ready to make some money?
I'm ready to make some money.
I get that. But you understand the position that we're in, to make sure that as you make money, that you are still held accountable to protecting the public, just as we are in regards to your business model?
Yes, I do understand that. I am aware of that. And, you know, that is a high priority of our company.
Okay. Well, good deal. Well, much success to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just while you were chatting before, I did ask Star Metro Officer if they had any issues, and you said...
No, ma'am. We have no areas of concern related to this application.
Thank you.
Just on the safe side, I would like to tell Councilman Barlow that I've been told that that's a solid cement wall that you have in the back.
Okay.
I never inspected it to see if that was so. That's what I was told, number one.
The first thing I'm going to do is go back there and knock on it to make sure myself. I see it all the time, but I've never put my hands on it.
And secondly, I'll move for approval on this, with the condition that the bars inside the glass cover the area fully of the window and the door, and that business does not start until that's completed.
We will send officers out as soon as the applicant is ready.
Okay. Is that all right with you?
That'll be fine.
Okay. Then I move to approve with the conditions as stated.
There's a motion? There's a motion. Please vote, and please post.
Thank you.
Motion carries. And Mr. Stevens, you're right. Everything is, everything's penetrable, depending on what you use. So, hopefully, you will abide by all of this. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda item 50, discussion for possible action regarding appeal of a work card denial for Alicia Elizabeth Adams, DB at Events with a Twist, 233 South Fourth Street. This is in Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin. And Ms. Duddleston, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, for the record, Karen Duddleston for Business Licensing. This applicant is applying to be a bartender at Events with a Twist, which is one of our liquor caterers. Their, the employer has provided the affidavit of support, and I believe that they are here today with this applicant. This applicant is currently on probation. The report was provided to each of you. Her patrol officer has offered his support in her seeking this position before you. So, we would recommend a one-year work card site specific to Events with a Twist and an administrative review.
Thank you. And if both of you will announce yourselves, only one of you is Alicia.
Yes, that's right.
That's you. Okay.
Alicia Adams.
Thank you. And?
And I'm Jennifer Clausion, the owner of Events with a Twist.
Okay, thank you. The owner. Okay, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think we both attended at separate times an event at this location just last week, Thursday evening, I believe, in the parking lot at your location. You had an event, you must have catered it yourself, I'm going to guess.
Yeah, I handle all the liquor catering for that facility.
Yes, okay. That was to honor the Katz family, as they celebrated 50 years of manpower. Well, I have a question for Alicia.
Yes.
There is quite a bit of time between the incident for which you were charged and then the ultimate arrest. Can you tell me why so long happened? Were you aware there was a warrant?
I was not. No, it was a federal case, and I was not aware. So, that's why there was that time.
I'm sorry. It's kind of funny. Stay closer to the microphone.
Oh, yes.
No, I mean, I know you meant federal case, in the sense that was, was it some sort of undercover action that had taken place?
Yes, it was.
Oh, I see. Okay. Well, I think that what our staff has recommended for you, Alicia, is approval if with a site-specific permission. That means essentially that location. Or, I don't know whether you want to mean that employer, because that's going to, locations change.
Correct, Your Honor, if I might. It would be for this employer. The employer has read the background report. They are aware and have signed an affidavit of support, and understand that they are responsible for the supervision. So, it would be with this employer.
Okay. Thank you. I'm in favor of this, but I don't want to move unless other members of the council have questions.
Anyone else with questions? Please go ahead, then.
I move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion on Agenda item 50. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Good luck to you, Alicia.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've attended Agenda item 51, so we'll move on to Agenda item 52. Boards and Commissions for Possible Action, Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Laura Buckman and Charles Foger. The terms expire March 24, 2015. The options are: reappoint Ms. Buckman, or appoint a new member to fill the seat; reappoint Mr. Foger, or appoint a new member to fill the seat. Councilman Beers, I understand you are taking action on Ms. Buckman's seat.
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you very much. We would first like to express thanks on behalf of Ward 2 to Lori Buckman for her service on the board. And then I would like to nominate for the council's consideration Angela Eliason to be the new member of this advisory board.
Thank you very much. And Councilman Barlow, do you have a recommendation for Mr. Foger? Steve, please.
Yes. First and foremost, I would like to thank Mr. Charles Foger for a wonderful job serving in this capacity for many, many years. And his commitment to the community most definitely has been heartfelt, and his representation on the board of Parks and Rec has been impacted in such a positive way. And so, for that, I say thank you, Mr. Foger, so very much for your leadership and time on the board. And Mayor and Council, my recommendation as Mr. Foger's replacement will be none other than Quincy Williams, who has been a longtime resident of the city of Las Vegas and in Ward 5, and has agreed to serve in the capacity of Parks and Rec Commissioner. That would be my motion.
Thank you very much. So, our motion is for Ms. Buckman, who we thank very much for her service in Ward 2. Angela Eliason, is that correct, Councilman Beers?
Allison.
Allison. And then for Mr. Foger, who we also thank so much for service, Quincy Williams to fill in his spot. And that's the motion. And please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Agenda item 53, for possible action, Building and Safety Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee. Nat Hodgson III, expiration 5/2/15. Reappoint Mr. Advisory Committee, Nat Hodgson III, expiration 5/2/15. Reappoint Mr. Hodgson or appoint a new member to fill the residential construction industry seat. Mr. Councilman Ross, I understand you have a recommendation.
I do. In fact, I thought we'd already done this, so I think I told Nat that we already reappointed him, but I would move to reappoint Nat Hodgson to, uh, to this, uh, to this advisory committee. Mayor and Council?
Thank you. There's a motion to reappoint Mr. Hodgson. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. And discussion for possible is Agenda Item 54 for Possible Action by the City Council to elect one of its members to be Mayor Pro Tem. Um, at this point, I'd like to thank Councilman, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, current Stavros Anthony, for the time and kindnesses he has shown to this board, and his special handling of the medical marijuana applications, which he did so expertly, and, um, but at this time, as we move forward, I would like to recommend Councilman Steve Ross to, um, take place as Mayor Pro Tem going forward, and that's my motion. And if you'll please vote and please post. That motion carries. And thank you, and so we congratulate you, and again, we thank, uh, Stavros Anthony for the service of these past three and a half years. We're very grateful to you, and thank you very much, and, uh, move forward. Recommending Committee Bill Eligible for Adoption at this meeting, Bill Number 2015-17. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor, thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2015-17, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, you predict a structural land to be annexed to make it susceptible to the laws obligations of the city and provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve on Bill Number 55. Please vote and please Motion carries. On Agenda Item Number 56, Bill Number 2015-18. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2015-18, in orders relating to the filming activity within the city, repealing all B M C Chapter 11.56 pertaining to the filming activity on city property, and replacing that chapter with a new chapter, 12.04, to provide updated and more comprehensive regulations regarding filming activity within the city and providing for other related matters.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
Thank you, there's a motion on Agenda Item 56. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 57, Bill Number 2015-19. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2015-19, First Amendment, in order to create a city of all citizens, tourists, improvement district, Symphony Park, and provide for other matters properly relating thereto.
Okay, and before I make a motion, Mayor, I, I believe that this item came out of recommending a 5-2, and so there may be, uh, comments from...
You mean 2-1?
I'm sorry. What did I say, 5-2?
That's all right.
Thank you. Uh, 2-1, and I believe that members of the council may have, uh, comments on this matter before I make a motion, and I see Mr. Arnt standing before us as well to give us a brief presentation, Mr. Arnt, I'm sure. Thank you, Mayor.
And, uh, if I might, before you even begin, but looking at your pictures, I'd like a copy, please. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Bill Arntz, Director, Economic and Urban Development. Uh, I had given a longer presentation at Recommending Committee. This will be very concise. Here before you today on the final step of creating a tourism improvement district in Symphony Park for the purposes of building a parking garage and related infrastructure. This ordinance is Bill Number 2015-19. This is the boundaries of the district. On the right, you see the latest phase of the Las Vegas Premium Outlets North Mall. We have planned retail and mixed-use development in Symphony Park, which is on the top right there. Uh, you see in the foreground the Smith Center, so it's basically land surrounding the Smith Center. There's also land on the very northern end, parcel PQ in Symphony Park. A question came up at Recommending Committee, why are we excluding land, uh, that trapezoidal shape to the top right? And the reason was that, uh, we had previously looked at funding the stadium project and wanted to make absolutely clear that we were not proposing to use these funds, tourism improvement district funds, for that project. So we had excluded that land. Uh, that is excluded for the purposes of today's action. Should you wish at a later date to look at expanding the size of the district, we could do that with separate action. There've been a number of prior approvals. I'm gonna highlight the main ones. Uh, there was a requirement that we offer Clark County an opportunity to comment on the tourism improvement district, which they did at a public hearing on January 20th. They also held a subsequent action item to, uh, pass a resolution expressing some concern and objections to the district. That was an advisory item from the Clark, Board of County Commissioners of Clark County. City Council had a public hearing on February 4th, which was your last action, and that approved Resolution R-2-2015, mainly approving two things. A fiscal effect finding that the district would have a positive fiscal effect for the community, and also approved a preponderance finding, which is meaning that a preponderance of the spending that it would occur within the district would originate from people outside of Nevada, and you had approved that finding as well. That latter finding, we took to Nevada Commission on Tourism on March 16th, 2015, and the commission had, uh, voted, uh, by six votes to one to approve, uh, that the item, which will allow now to move forward to this final step. Uh, we also had approved that no retailers operating inside the district boundaries for 120 days prior to April 15th, and the district is entirely within the city limits. This is today's action. This is the bill. This creates the district. This is the final step at creating the district. You're not approving any spending or bond funding for the district. You're simply establishing the district by ordinance. It affirms the council finding and meeting that prior retail exclusion. That's Section Two of the bill. Section Three simply sets the district boundaries. Section Four authorizes, uh, a turbo provision, and this is only if, in the event we come back to you and issue, propose to issue bonds, sales tax anticipated revenue bonds. Uh, and it does authorize us to do this. It does not obligate us to do this. So we're gonna discuss this as a later item. Section Five, it defines the project as the garage and, uh, additional infrastructure in Symphony Park. And Section Six, it pledges TID funds, uh, within the district, uh, in Section Six. Uh, there was one correction that was made at Recommending Committee, which Mr. Steed put on the record. There was a date which was incorrect in the ordinance. Uh, the date for the Nevada Commission on Tourism hearing was identified incorrectly, and that was corrected at Recommending Committee, and I'd like to incorporate the comments made at the Recommending Committee and make it part of the record for this action. If approved, what are the next steps? We'll prepare an agreement with Nevada taxation. That's to handle the flow of funds, so that'll be between Nevada taxation and the city of Las Vegas. That's in Section Eight of the bill, and it's authorizes us to do that. We're gonna come back to you at a, at a upcoming council meeting to do that. Also, we're authorized to work with a financial advisor to provide feasibility review on the future issuance of sales tax anticipated revenue bonds, Section Nine. Again, I want to reiterate, you are not approving bonds today. You're approving a creation ordinance creating the district. We have, have to come back to you to do that, to look at issuing bonds. We'll have a full financial review. We've already engaged our financial advisor from, uh, Zion's Bank, Nevada State Bank, and we'll continue to do so. And then finally, this last bullet, there's a misnumber there. It says reimbursement ordinance. We're actually come, gonna come back to you with a resolution to allow us to be reimbursed for any front-end expenses. So for example, with the parking garage, as we begin to work on the design and development of the garage, we're gonna incur expenses, hiring a design team, eventually hiring a contractor. Those front-end expenses, if we in the future decide to issue sales tax anticipated revenue bonds, we can be reimbursed for those expenses out of the bonds. We can do that if we have a reimbursement resolution authorized by the City Council. So we're gonna be coming back to you at a later item, very likely the very next city council meeting, with that resolution. Uh, with that, that concludes my presentation. With me today is Kendra Follett of Sherman and Howard, who's our legal counsel, who's advised us in this matter, and we're recommending approval.
Thank you. Could I go back to the very first slide? Could you point where, um, the garage is anticipated to be located?
Certainly. So if you see the aerial map here, the right-hand picture, the bigger picture, and you see there, uh, what's in the middle of the donut, so to speak, uh, that's not highlighted in blue, that's the Smith Center for the Performing Arts. As you can see, I think it's a dated photo, so my apologies to the Smith Center. But the area just to the left of there, uh, between the Smith Center and Grand Central Parkway, that is parcel B. Uh, we have reached agreement with Cleveland Clinic, where they've authorized and they've amended our existing development agreement with the Cleveland Clinic to allow us to build this garage on parcel B. So effective today, we have the right to move forward on parcel B, and that's our intention to build the parking garage on parcel B, which is again just to the immediate left, which is, uh, on this picture, uh, just to the west, northwest of the Smith Center.
Northwest of, can you point on the map with your...
And I, I don't think I can...
There it is. Nope, you've got it just there, Thomas.
Communications in the back is helping me, but if, there, just sort of right there, that, that is...
That big parcel immediately to the le...
Right.
What I'm curious about is here, if you're talking about the Cleveland Clinic that has the Frank Gehry-designed, um, front, um, are they being included in the conversation as you move forward on this building, or what?
Mayor, thank you. Let me clarify, maybe it's easier to...
And it's where specifically?
Since everybody's been to the Smith Center, almost everybody, I think, if you arrive for a show at the Smith Center, it's the parking lot immediately in front of the Smith Center building. So it's not the parking lot next to the LaRuevo Center. This is the surface lot that the city installed. The city parking team through my, my team is managing that lot. So if you've arrived for a show, and, uh, it's a valet lot, a premium lot, it's also a lot to serve the Las Vegas Metro Chamber of Commerce, that entire block, what we've put in for surface parking, that's the piece of real estate I'm referring to. We are gonna be reserving a portion of parcel B for future medical office development. So this will still give Cleveland Clinic ample opportunity to build out their campus. We've been in close cooperation with their entire team, particularly Brian Smith of Cleveland Clinic, so this will not impede the clinic and their ability to expand. It'll actually help them in their ability to expand.
So if I may, then it goes to the northern part, west of the Smith Center, but the northern part, part of that big parcel, as you have it?
That's correct, and maybe, Mayor, maybe for, I'm not sure if I have a map of Symphony
And how many stories is, is it projected to hold? Is this gonna be a five-story garage or a 20-story garage?
Uh, Mayor, as I answer that question, I'm gonna refer to the overhead. I, just for not only your benefit, but the listening audience, I have a map of Symphony Park.
Okay, now reorient me to this map, please. Where are we?
Mayor, thank you. So this is parcel B as in boy. This piece is the Smith Center, so this is the large hall. That entire block is the campus with the children's museum. So this parcel B as in boy, the garage is gonna be situated somewhere in the center of the parcel, which is gonna be leaving ample room for future development.
So actually, it won't be visible except from the west side on the Grand Central Parkway?
Uh, we're still in design, so it could, it may punch through all the way to, uh, the promenade place, uh, for efficiency, but one thing I think that is important to note, we believe that the TID will create sufficient funds to do a world-class garage. It's our intention to make this arguably the finest garage in Southern Nevada, so we believe we have sufficient funds to do that. So it's not, it's not gonna look just like a concrete block. We're gonna have it looking like the premium garages that you see with some of the resort properties and the resort corridor. It's gonna have an attractive skin. It's gonna, if you're driving up to it, even if you're driving up to the entrance of the garage, you're gonna think it's, it's actually part of the medical campus. So that's, that's our designer intention, and of course, it'll support retail in Symphony Park and the retail across the street at the Alamo.
And when they run out at, uh, yeah, at the World Market Center. Um, and how many stories, I'm sorry if you answered me, how many stories are you looking?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I forgot to answer. Uh, we're still designing that. It'll be one, uh, 1,200 spaces. We believe it will be approximately five stories, but that could change, uh, up or down one story. But we're looking at a 1,200-space garage.
Okay.
Mayor, I would like to just weigh in really quickly, because we're getting very much into the detail of, of structured parking facility, which I completely appreciate. But what we would be doing is we would be bringing back a bonding ordinance that would actually define all the project, and, and I think it's important for all of you and for the, uh, the public to recognize that, uh, this TID would go to support a variety of infrastructure, including a parking garage. That would be a part of that entire conversation that you have about where you want to go for, with Symphony Park. Uh, that could include roadwork, drainage facilities, a variety of other things. So I just want to make sure, even though Bill didn't cover that level of detail, that's the kind of thing that we would be bringing back to you.
Done.
If you choose to implement the district today, then the project that would be funded by the district would come back in greater detail at a subsequent vote. I just want to make sure we're abundantly clear on that.
No, we are, and the other piece is, what's the timeline, assuming this would go forward at this point? What's the timeline for your first visit back with something having taken place?
Thank you, Mayor. We believe that we'd like to come back with those other two items that I referenced in the presentation at the very next council meeting, so May 6th, for the reimbursement or, uh, resolution to reimburse us for expenses, so we can outline the expense plan in that document. We'll have the agreement with Nevada taxation, hopefully done for that council meeting as well. Uh, it is gonna take some time to figure out the design and the development of the garage. We have to, uh, engage our, our public works team and look at the best process to get the best quality project at the, the best value for this thing. So that, that process will take, take several months.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Uh, Councilman Barlow, do you want to make a motion on this one as well, then, please?
Yes, ma'am, move for approval.
Thank you, there's a, a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, NRS 271A dot 080, paragraph one, sub-paragraph A, says that during this four-month period prior to the adoption of our ordinance, we are required to determine that no retailers will have maintained or will be maintaining a fixed place of business within the district. Um, I think the body's focus has thus far been on the first part of that or, that is that there have been no sales tax generated on the site of the new shopping center. But the, or, the actual NRS, in addition, requires expressed in the future tense, that we have to find that no one will be maintaining a fixed place of business during this four-month period, which we have found to be the case. Uh, in fact, the, uh, we were very careful about the timing to make sure that today came before they actually had their first day of taxable sales. So, uh, in my reading of the law, we can't do this legally, so I will be voting against the motion.
Yes, and Councilman Anthony, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I won't be supporting this item either. I just want to put my reasons on the record. Uh, number one, um, I do agree with Councilman Beers, it is a little foggy on whether we can even do this in the first place. Uh, number two, I think we'll be taking on, uh, a lot more additional debt when we really don't need to. Um, number three, um, I don't believe we should be building a parking garage in Symphony Park since we have no idea what's gonna be built there. Uh, there's no plans to build anything there at that point, and, uh, we do have quite a few of our government partners that, uh, do not agree with this particular, um, ordinance, so with all those in mind, I will also be voting no.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Councilman Coffin?
Yeah, I, um, I wanted to just say that, uh, I think we have an obligation to build a garage. That part there is unquestioned, because that's why it's on that map. The reason is, is because we promised Cleveland Clinic that as they expand, we will build. But we're also losing, gosh, I don't know, 500 or 600 spaces when Citra Medical Residential starts right adjacent to the Smith Center. Aren't we required to guarantee so many, uh, parking spots for the existing businesses?
Thank you. Uh, Councilman, for the record, Bill... Thank you, Councilman, for the record, Bill Lawrence, we do have an existing obligation with the Smith Center for the Performing Arts to provide 1,200 spaces. The terms for that obligation are somewhat fluid, we agreed over the first five years of the Smith Center, because parking for the venue that they operate is so important, we said to the Smith Center, the first five years, we'll provide that at no cost to you. After that first five years, we needed the ability to change that, and the reason is, we're trying to build urban development in the heart of our city. We're, in other words, we're trying to replace these surface lots with parking garages in the future. So the idea all along had been with the Smith Center is, and that's one of the reasons why they're kind of smack dab in the middle of the Symphony Park campus, is we're going to meet their parking needs throughout Symphony Park. So the idea was, we'll meet their parking needs long-term on parcel B, on the medical parcels, on parcel L, on the other side of the park, it's event parking, so it's, makes sense, common sense, that event parking, you're going to need to have a plan to manage that, but then long-term, we're going to have additional commercial development. We do have commitments from existing partners in place for all the parcels surrounding the Smith Center. I can't tell you today with 100% certainty whether or not all of those projects are going to move forward or not, but we do have commitments today. Regardless of what is built in the future, we will have a need for parking, regardless of what is built in the future, the plan in Symphony Park is to have ground-floor retail, and we believe this garage is going to support those retailers with, who have interest in moving into Symphony Park.
Okay, so the State Commission approved the plan, keeping in mind all the provisions of the statute referenced earlier. Our legal counsel has kept in mind the statutes as well in presenting this, preparing this for form, and so I don't understand why we would worry about the conjunctive order here if in fact it really was something that I, you know, is beyond my pay grade as far as the law is concerned, I don't pretend to be a lawyer, but this has been looked at by lawyers here, as well as at the state, and in fact, the county lawyers, for the benefit of the commissioners who didn't like this idea, they also looked at it, but they didn't disagree on the terms or how it might make the statute, they were more concerned about a flow of tax dollars away from them, which was frankly, an imagined flow of tax dollars, but nevertheless, they didn't disagree on the term that has just been brought up, so I'm feeling very comfortable with voting for this based on the law. The substance is common sense, it makes sense that we have to do this, so I will support it.
Thank you, Councilmen, we, oh, we have already done it, so Councilman Barlow and Coffin, and Councilwoman has not cast a vote, the three of you?
No.
What, then, show? Okay. Okay, that motion carries, thank you, we'll move on to agenda item recommending committee, bill eligible for adoption later meeting, item 58, bill number 2015-20, will be heard at a later meeting, we'll move on to new bills. New bills, items 59 and 60, bills number 2015-21 and 2015-22 will be heard at recommending committee Monday, May 4, 20, oh, May 4, 2015, City Attorney, please read our bills.
I'll be happy to, Your Honor, thank you. Bill number 2015-21, in order concerning City of Las Vegas, special improvement, district number 1485, all to drive landscape maintenance FY 2016, providing for the payment of the cost of expenses of maintaining street and beautification improvements, assessing the cost of maintenance against accessible lots, tracks and parts of land benefited by said maintenance, ratifying, approving, and confirming all action previously taken, and prescribing details in connection therewith. And finally, bill number 2015-22, in order concerning City of Las Vegas, special improvement, district number 1516, Fremont Street Maintenance District FY 2016, Las Vegas Boulevard to East Street, providing for the payment of the cost of the expensive of the commercial area revitalization project, assessing the cost of the project against the accessible lots, tracks and parts of land benefited by said improvements, ratifying, approving, and confirming all action previously taken, and prescribing details in connection therewith.
Thank you very much, new bills 2015-21, 2015-22, aside to city council members, Barlow and Coffin, and replacing Mayor Pro Tem Anthony, Mayor Pro Tem Ross, thank you, the morning session of city councils now, yes, sir?
Mayor, just, just for a point of clarification on the calendar, I will not be available on the May 4 planning, I'm sorry, recommending meeting.
Say it again?
I will, I will not be available on that date.
Okay.
For recommending.
Okay, Councilwoman, will you be available on that date?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Is it?
May, Monday, May 4, he's not available?
I'd have to check with the vice.
Okay.
We're working it out, I just wanted to make sure that the clerk knew and will.
And we'll find either Councilwoman or one of our councilpersons, or myself.
We'll get it covered.
Okay.
If I could, Your Honor, before you recess, I just want to make clear that bill number 2015-19 was adopted as First Amendment.
Okay, did you get that clarification? Okay, so we will recess, it's now 1:15, so we will reconvene at half hour? Quarter of two? Thank you, so you have a half hour, half hour. And here's this, if I may, Stacy, here's this from this morning, he may come back this afternoon. Okay, we're here, on time.
Yeah, if you get it, you get it, you don't, you don't.
Two minutes late.
Yeah, good.
Thank you, Jen. Until.
Okay. All right, how low do we have, 1, 2, 3, 4, we're ready to roll. Agenda item, are we on 61, Stacy?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Okay. For possible action, any items from this afternoon session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time, Mayor Pro Tem. Why are you typing?
I'm logging in. I think I got it. I did remember, thank you. Yes, sorry, Mayor, yes, agenda item 65, special use permit 55313, applicant Infinite Wellness Incorporated is requesting withdrawal without prejudice, and agenda item 66, D I R 56412, applicant Infinite Wellness Incorporated is requesting a strike.
Okay, and that is your motion?
That is my motion, Mayor.
Okay, and of course, just to be perfectly clean on this, I'm going to abstain because my son's involved, so anyway, there's a motion?
Excuse me, Mayor, just for the record, I just let you know, we've, the city attorney office is giving you an advance opinion with regard to your extension, I've given a copy to the clerk, so you're, you're okay?
You are so good, thank you very much, so I'm covered, please, everyone, there's a motion, please vote, and please post.
Verbal, yes.
Councilwoman, this, these are on agenda item 65, which is, what was, one was withdrawn without prejudice, and 66 has been stricken, so would, you want to vote in the affirmative?
I, I move to approve the withdrawal of 65 and the stricken of 66, is that what he said in his letter?
Right.
Yes, oh, you had the vote? Oh, sorry about that. I can vote.
Okay, that motion carries, thank you very much. Agenda items 62 through 64 may be considered one motion vote, they're considered routine, non-public and public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. Agenda item 62, RQR 56796, applicant owner Eastern 95 LLC, a required review of an approved special use permit, SUP 5 to 101, for a retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor off-sale use within an existing 4,184 square foot convenience store with a waiver to allow a 242-foot distance separation from church house of worship where 400 feet is required at 400 Northeastern Avenue C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin. Number 63, RQR 57928, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC owner Z and Z Investment LLC, and a required review of an approved special use permit, U dash 0018-95, for an existing 40-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 2350 North Rainbow Boulevard, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Number 64 is RQR 57930, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC owner Elden Equity Fund 17 LLC, required review of an approved special use permit, U 00210-97, for an existing 40-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 2401 North Rancho Drive, C2, General Commercial Zone, Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. All items are recommended for approval by staff, and items are public hearing items which I declare open. If there's anyone who wishes to be here, heard on these items, please come forward and state your name for the record. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearings, is there a motion to approve, approve agenda items 62 through 64, that would be Councilman Coffin or Barlow? Hello?
Move for approval.
Thank you, there's a motion on these three items, please vote and please post. Motion carries. Agenda items 65 and 66, S 65, oh, those are the ones that have been stricken or withdrawn, so forget those, we are on to agenda item 67 and 68. Z O N 57688, a request for rezoning from U undeveloped zone, L low-density residential to R1, single-family residential, and number 68 is T M P 57689, a request for a tentative map for a 76 lot, single-family residential subdivision, U undeveloped zone, L low-density residential, proposed R dash 1, single-family residential. Applicant, Century Communities and owners, owner, Apollo Property Holdings LLC, on 19.71 acres at the northeast corner, Jones Boulevard and Horse Drive, P R J 57619, both planning commission and staff recommend approval on items 67 and 68, these are in Ward 6 with Councilwoman Ross, public hearing items which I declare open, is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, Your Honor, members of the council, good afternoon, my name's Bob Gronhour, 8345 West Sunset Road, I'm here representing Century Communities in this, in these two matters. The property here, as I could show you on the overhead, if I could get your attention, the property is located on the northeast corner of Horse and Jones, out in the northwest of the city of Las Vegas here. The property is currently planned for low density, which would allow up to about 108 homes to be built on the property. We're asking to come in with R1 zoning that would only build up to 78, excuse me, 76 homes, which comes out to a density of 3.85 dwelling units to the acre. We believe that this makes a perfect fit within the neighborhood itself, it's an infill piece of property located on two major arterial streets here, staff is recommending approval, your planning, planning commission is also recommending approval, and I'd ask you to follow those recommendations.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Gronhour and Mr. Parago, it's your turn.
Thank you, Your Honor, as the development conforms to the development standards outlined in Title 19, including perimeter buffer and connectivity standards, staff is recommending approval of the associated rezoning and tentative map with standard conditions.
Thank you. Okay, public hearing, anyone wishing to be heard on these items? Hearing none, a closed public hearing, and Councilman Ross, do you have a motion on number 67?
I do, Mayor, I would follow planning commissions and staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, there's a motion on 67, please vote and please post. That motion carries, and on agenda item 68?
I would move to follow planning commission and staff's recommendation for approval.
There's a motion on agenda item number 68, please vote and please post on that. And that motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gronhour, and agenda item number 69, S D R 57890, public hearing, applicant owner Liberty Baptist Church of Las Vegas, for possible action, a request for major amendment to plot plan review, Z dash 0089-86, per N1, closed per N, for proposed 70-foot radio communication tower, operating in conjunction with an existing church house of worship on a portion of 7.47 acres of land located 6501 West Lake Mead Boulevard, C V Civic Zone, Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. The planning commission and staff recommend approval, this is a public hearing which I declare open, is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, I'm Dave Tyson, the pastor of Liberty Baptist Church.
How are you, and welcome, do you want to make, oh, it's beautiful, do you want to make any comments at this point?
No, I'm just here to.
No, I'm just here to answer any questions that I might be able to answer.
Thank you, Pastor. And Mr. Parago?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No waivers or variances are required with this application, and the proposed tower can be constructed in a way that is harmonious and compatible with the neighborhood, with, I'm sorry, with the existing and surrounding land uses, and therefore, staff is recommending approval.
Beautiful. It's a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item? I'll close the public hearing. And Councilman Barlow, it's yours.
Good to see you, Pastor Tyson.
Good to see you, too.
All right. Can you explain to us what your plans are so that those who are curious will know what your plans are moving forward? It's pretty exciting.
This is a gospel radio station. We're going to be just, we came here thirty-seven years ago. I was born and raised here, but came here thirty-seven years ago to start Liberty Baptist Church, and we've been on that property now for twenty-three years. And our plan is just to have a gospel radio station where we can preach the gospel of Jesus Christ, His death, burial, and resurrection.
The normal question, where'd you go to high school?
Rancho High School.
Go Rancho. Rams?
Rams, yeah.
The Rancho Rams, see? We have one. Anybody else here? Okay. Warriors? No, this is a Ram game.
I think we have Rancho, and Western, and Eldorado.
And Gorman.
And Gorman.
First Valley was out there.
Okay. Well, good deal. Well, much success to you.
All right, well, anyway, the public hearing, nobody wanting to speak, you're going forward now. So we're going to have an aerial. How high is it going to be?
Yeah, I believe, how tall is the steeple, Pastor?
The steeple is fifty-nine-and-a-half feet, and this one will be, this tower will be seventy feet.
Seventy? Okay, and it'll be monolithic?
Yes, monolithic.
Okay, all right.
And how, if I might add, your spire is how tall?
Fifty-nine-and-a-half.
Fifty-nine.
So it'll be about eleven feet taller.
And it is going to be located where on this property, or on this picture that you're looking at?
I have a, if you can.
Go to the next power, right there. There it is, Mayor.
Oh. Okay. Councilman Beers had a comment question?
I just wanted to mention, as long as we're all reciting our high school backgrounds, that I went to the fiftieth anniversary of the opening of Clark High School, my alma mater, in Councilman Tarkanian's district about two weeks ago. And my memory had not failed during an assembly in one of those gymnasiums, you can't hear a thing.
See what happens. That's what happens in age, and it might be your hearing rather than the college oriole. So it happens with age. Anyway, wonderful. So we're delighted you're a Rancho, and here's, here comes Bishop Gorman to the rescue.
Here comes Bishop Gorman to my immediate left.
Go Gale. Yes.
You're up.
Gale has a question. The question I have is, and I'm not sure what the protests center on, whether it was the aesthetics or not, I don't know. The question I have, Dave, is, well, first of all, I can't see it here. I haven't looked thoroughly, but I can't see whether it's going to be AM or FM.
It's an FM. It's one-oh-one-point-one is the frequency.
What will be one-oh-one-point-one? You've already got the FCC approval, huh?
Yes, we do.
Will you use also simulcast, or at least, I'm sorry, I mean, stream on the web?
Yes.
Will you have music, or a combination of music and talk?
Yeah, we'll have music and preachers, and that's about it. And we'll have some live, we have a station manager. In fact, she's with us. Her name's Crystal Heath, and she'll be doing a live radio program in the morning. And in the evening, we're putting the programming together right now.
Will you also have, will you be, I should say, not streaming, but will you be picking up content from other broadcasters? That you will be, so you'll have to have a satellite dish out there somewhere?
No, we won't need a satellite dish. We'll do that over, we have already got the equipment that we can get the stuff. I'm not tech savvy, but the tech guys are already downloading and getting stuff off the internet.
I would just caution you, I will support this, but I think you need to be aware of possible radio frequency interference in your neighborhood there. Sometimes that happens with a broadcaster. How many watts are you going to be broadcasting at?
I think it's a hundred, I think it's just a hundred watts. It's a low-powered, it's a low-powered FM station.
Oh, okay, hundred watt. Okay, so it won't be even heard downtown, probably.
Well, there is a, there's a picture of the area where it will be. Do you have that? It's a little map of the area that will be covered.
It's not in our kit, I don't think.
Okay.
Yeah, there it is.
I've got one right here. There you go. You can see where it's located, and you can see the heaviest area of concentration will be the circled area. This map says that the green area will have access to it, and the red area, it's going to be, there'll be interference, and the yellow area will not be affected at all.
Will you have, just be prepared for complaints should they come. Sometimes people living close to the stick may get interference. It'll just be spurious signals that'll come in. And there are shielding techniques to be able to protect, protect your neighbors.
But we want to do whatever.
So you should be aware of the possible extra expense you probably have to incur, because we'll be obliged to help the neighbors, I think, in that kind of a situation.
Okay. We've only had two neighbors come and ask us where they were, where it was going to be located. We've taken them back and shown them the location of the, of the antenna, and once we show them where it's going to be, they have no problem with it whatsoever.
Sure. It all depends on what happens, what comes out of your stick there. You never know. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Barlow?
Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion. On agenda item sixty-nine, please vote and please post. That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number seventy, D I R five-seven-eight-one-six. Public hearing, applicant K A G Property LLC owner, K A G Development South LLC at Al, for discussion and possible action on a request regarding an amendment to the development agreement for the Kyle Canyon Development approximately sixteen-hundred-sixty-two acres at the southwest corner of Fort Apache and Moccasin Road. This is Ward six, Councilman Ross. Planning commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing I declared open as the applicant or representative present.
Yes, Your Honor, members of the council. My name's Bob Gronauer, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road. I'm here representing the developer in this matter. I think if staff, do you want me to give a presentation first, or do you want to speak first?
Through, Madam Mayor, I think it would be fine if we went ahead and made our report first, and I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Lowenstein, who has put in a tremendous number of hours in working on this, these negotiations and finalizing this development agreement, and has done an amazing job keeping track of all the language changes and stuff. So I'll turn it over to him to make a brief staff report.
Thank you very much. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, this amendment will constitute the Second Amendment to the originally approved development agreement in two thousand and seven. Master developer's proposal to amend the effective development agreement reflects the change in growth and development conditions, as well as changes in the certain infrastructure projects that have either been completed or revised in their scope. These amendments include following major changes to a previously approved development agreement, the rebranding of the master plan community from Kyle Canyon to Sky Canyon, the introduction of alternate fire station contribution language to allow for either a four-point-one-million-dollar contribution or the dedication of land and construction of a fire station within the community, the elimination and replacement of apparent final map and associated triggers and requirements with development phase maps and associated requirements and triggers, the amendment of the development agreement to extend the time in which the master developers to enter into an memorandum of understanding with the Clark County School District, the amendment of the master land use plan to allow for approximately twenty-three percent reduction in medium-low land use designation acreage, and approximately ten percent and sixty-six percent increase in medium-low attached and low-land use designation acreage respectively. The amendment of the master land use plan for the relocating of the proposed education facilities, elementary, middle, and high school within the community, the amendment of the master land use plan to illustrate the new network of community park locations, as well as a potential fire station, the amendment of the parks agreement to reflect the new network of community parks locations, their associated conceptual drawings, and their construction commencement triggers. The proposed revisions are in conformance with goal number three of the Las Vegas twenty-twenty master plan as some subsequent objective three-point-one, three-point-five, and three-point-six. Development standards have been reviewed by the City of Las Vegas Office of Sustainability and have been found to be in general compliance with the resolution R one-seventy-six of two thousand and four. Development standards are either meet or exceed the requirements of the Unified Development Code pertaining to the streetscape design and connectivity, as well as at the previously approved development agreement. Development generally meets the intent of the traditional neighborhood development general plan designation by providing for a mix of housing types, commercial and civic uses within the community. As such, staff is recommending approval. Additional language has been added since its last, since the backup, and I'd like to read that into the record as submitted to the clerk. Regarding the definition section, the master utility plan added that the master developer shall separately require designated building to disclose the existence of such envy energy facilities located on or in the vicinity of any affected residential lots, as well as, there were a number of scrivener errors and adjustments and typos that are being addressed that was also submitted to the clerk, as well as just to identify that there were a number of conditional language changes that are identified in the staff report, as far as amendments that will be present in the final draft version. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to be heard on this item? I will close the public hearing, and back to you, Mr. Gronauer.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. There's a few things I want to point out, because I think to start out, today is an exciting day for the city of Las Vegas. This is a sixteen-hundred-acre master plan residential, master plan community that's going to be constructed up in the northwest area in the city of Las Vegas. More importantly, this is, at a minimum, a three-billion-dollar economic shot in the arm for the city of Las Vegas when it comes to the amount of houses, the prices of the houses that are going to be constructed up here, up in the northwest area on the sixteen-hundred acres. Before I get into the presentation, though, I think it's important, I have some representatives from Olympia who are here. You're familiar with Olympia. They've developed Southern Highlands. I have Mark Bulldog and Chris Armstrong, who are here in the audience. And I also have one of my partners, Stephanie Allen, who's helped negotiate the development agreement. With that being said, because this is a private-public partnership of an agreement that we have, we spent many hours with your staff, and I want to start by saying, thank you, Mr. Parago, Peter Lowenstein, Jim Lewis is here, and everybody else. We spent many hours and several months actually getting to where we are today. And the exciting thing is, we actually have construction going on as we speak today with the infrastructure that's being put in. I'm going to go through that here in a second. So if I could get your attention to the overhead, I'll just give you an idea of where we're located here in the northwest. I'll lift this up. As you can take a look on the plan here, the southern border of our property is Grand Teton Drive in this area. The western border is Pulley. And then if you go further across the US ninety-five, we have Moccasin, which is to the north of us, and then you have Fort Apache Road, which is located here. And just recently, you approved the street name change, where we're changing this area, which is a horse interchange in here, which is going to be now our Sky Canyon Park Drive Street. We have a west and a north area in this area, which is going to be the entryway into Sky Canyon itself. As I already showed you or already mentioned, not only are we going to have single-family residential development, we'll have other mixture of houses in this area. We're also going to have various commercial, we have mixed use, we have general commercial location here. We also have a gaming site that's already approved for neighborhood gaming, for a casino hotel. In addition, we are donating three school sites. We, to the school district, located right here is a high school that will be donating land for construction for our high school. In this area here will be an elementary school. And then up in this area, by the school district choosing, this is either going to be in another elementary school or a middle school in this area. As you can see, the green throughout the, throughout the property itself, it's labeled with parks and trails. One of the things that we did in working with Councilman Ross, this area here, which is, which was previously known as Indian Hills Park, is now going to be known as Officer Alan Beck Memorial Park in this area. The family lives in this area, and what we wanted to do as a tribute on behalf of Mr. Goett in Olympia and working with Councilman Ross, we will be building that park in honor of Mr. Beck and his family in that area. So one of the unique circumstances that are nuances within the plan itself, it has a little personal touch. But one of the things I'm going to point out here, and I got a couple more minutes here just to go through some of the highlights. In this area here, this is our signature park. I'm going to walk you through this, because what's unique about this, from now on, when you hear about Sky Canyon, you're going to hear about this community center. Mr. Goett and his group is upfront, putting in twelve million dollars into this facility. And I'm going to walk you through this facility itself, because this is going to be the main staple of the master plan community here as I go through it. So the park itself, which will be under construction within, hopefully in the next, yes.
That little burp out there. Go north, left, west, yes. What's that?
Yes, that's another park. That's Iron Mountain Park that we'll be constructing also.
But it's all part of your property, that just little burp there?
Yep.
Interesting. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. So as I, one of the things I want to point out is, we are already under construction, which is known as Phase One in this area, which is a hundred-and-sixty acres right now as we speak. This park will be under construction very shortly, because obviously, as we open, we want to have this open concurrently as we start building homes. So the first thing that I want to point out is, on this signature park here, as you can see, it's about thirteen, it's over thirteen acres. On the thirteen acres, we have a lot of multipurpose use type of grass area that you're going to be able to congregate and play on. We have a fitness center that's going to be located right here. We have a pool area located here, and this is going to start off as our sales center, but this is also going to be our community center by the time when we start building the homes out, out in this area. But what's important, too, we're going to have a sheriff's office. We're also going to have a greenhouse. We're going to be interacting with the community itself, where we'll be in charge of that. And then we also have a bike shop, because one of the things that we're going to take advantage of in this area is the outdoor stuff. So by taking, taking advantage of that marketing ability, that's one of the things that we're going to do, is have the bikes, do tours, et cetera, et cetera. So with all this here, this is what I'm going to show you, which is under construction, or will be under construction soon. This is the elevation of the building itself that you'll be seeing for the community center. And these are some of the interior designs where we're going to have a little bit of a, like a small restaurant, a juice bar, et cetera, on the interior itself for the residents. This is the pool location area that I've already mentioned to you that we're going to have, and this is just a little bit of the, gives you a view of the lobby area itself. The other thing I want to show you before I end my presentation is the signage, within the entry monument signage here. These are the markations here of, signs are going to be about thirty-seven feet in height, and as you can see here, they're going to be specifically lighted in the area. And these are the entry monumentation for Sky Canyon itself. And obviously, we could be changing these colors during the seasons throughout the year itself. And then finally, the last thing I want to show you is what's under construction today. Not only are we under construction, but three of these four areas are already bought and then ready to be built by developers. In this area here that's under construction today is for Pulty Homes. As you know, a national builder. Another public national builder is Woodside Homes, which is going to be down in this area for forty acres. Century Communities, a developer, the public developer I was just representing on a couple items before, has this forty acres. And we already have this forty acres in escrow with another public builder. I cannot give its name. Some of you may already know that, but I will not announce that publicly, that will be closing on the property. And as you can see in relationship to this hundred-and-sixty acres that's already under construction, we have our signature park that's located here. So to sum everything up is, it's an exciting day, not only for the city, but for us, because this is a step in the right direction, based on the economics of where we are in today's world. This is something that we need from the development community, and the city needs, and that's why, when you put together this public-private partnership here, this is something that we all can be a proud, can be very proud of, of another master plan community going in the right direction. So that being said, I can answer any other questions that you may have.
Very exciting, really exciting. Comments, questions? Okay, Councilman Ross, you lucky man, you had this expansive wall.
Yeah, I was excited. I asked Mr. Gronauer and his team to give this presentation, because I want certainly you, Mayor, and the rest of the council to see this fabulous project coming to life. This is just the beginning. And, you know, the, Mr. Lowenstein's presentation regards to all those changes, and this is the Second Amendment, correct, Mr. Lowenstein? Through the mayor, of course?
Yes.
Through the mayor, that's correct.
And I don't, I expect actually more coming, so I think we all recognize that because of the growth of this and the ever-changing dynamic of what's coming out there. But I want to express my appreciation to you, Mr. Gronauer, your team, certainly our team. And I was thinking about how many man-hours has gone into this master plan development, going all the way back to focused development? Mr. Lewis, he's got a grin on his face. Have you been keeping track of the hours? Are they billable? Just kidding, just kidding. So that being said, I appreciate the school district for working with us as well, to board members Garvey and Too for coming together.
to board members Garvey and Two for coming together with us to meet, to discuss these significant issues. And I think that's the way to do this, throw everybody in the room, get this worked out, and move forward. Certainly, you guys are doing that, so I express my appreciation to you. And this is a sign to me that the economy certainly has changed. Lenders are starting to lend, people are buying cars and trucks and houses and the whole nine yards. So it's a significant, it's a significant event in the city's history today because of what's happened in the economy. Mr. Gronhour, I have one ask of you, before I move to, to follow Planning Commission's and staff's recommendation for approval of this item. I would like you to take these, this piece, and go visit with Commissioner Brown and show him, so he knows what's coming as well. I'd like him to see that, because he represents that area, even though it's in the city limits, city limits, it's, I think it's significant that he understands what's going on out there as well. Would you do that for me? I have a meeting with him next week, I'll see him next week, and I'll bring it. I'd appreciate that. With that, Mayor and city council members, I would move to follow staff's recommendation, staff and Planning Commission's recommendation for approval on a fabulous project. But Mr. Perrigo has one comment.
Yes, Your Honor, if I might, just to clarify that that does include with amendments as well, please?
With amendments. That's my motion, Mayor.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote on this exciting news. There we are, and please post. Thank you, that motion carries, thank you so much.
Thank you, have a good night. Take care.
Can't wait, way to go. Okay, agenda item seventy-one. Set date, on any appeals filed, there are required public hearings from city planning commission meetings, dangerous building nuisance litter abatements. Thank you very much. I instruct the city clerk to set those public hearings and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements. We move on to citizen participation. Agenda item seventy-two, citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limit, must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion, any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speakers allowed. We will set the timer at three minutes, please, anyone who wishes to come forward. Hearing and seeing none, we will close the public comment and move on to agenda item seventy-three. And so, single, council member recognition comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for, for action. Councilman Coffin had to leave, so we'll go right on to Councilman Barlow, and then Councilwoman, and then continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Would like to inform the community that coffee with the councilmen for the month of May, May seventh, will be canceled. I will not be in town, so please make a note that coffee with the councilmen will be canceled for the month of May. In addition to that, summer camp and learn to swim for two thousand and fifteen is underway. Summer camp will be held at the Doolittle Community Center, June eighth through the fourteenth, seven AM to seven PM. So parents, if you're looking for an opportunity for your youngsters to be involved, please send them down to the Doolittle Community Center for the summer swim lessons that are available, as well as private lessons that will be available. Please contact the Las Vegas Parks and Rec at two-two-nine-seven-five-two-nine for more information. And of course, in honor of National Library Week, beginning April twelfth through the eighteenth, I would like to also remind everyone during the month of April is, love your library. So tell a friend every month. Introduce friends and family and neighbors to benefit, the benefits of having a library card and also taking your little ones to the library. Encourage everyone to sign up during the month of April. If they already have a library card, please like them on Facebook as well. So please go and utilize your nearest local library. Neon to Nature Trails app now available. The Southern Nevada Health District recently launched a new app for smartphones that can help Southern Nevadas, Southern Nevadans connect to the valley's six-hundred-plus miles of walking paths and trails. The app can be downloaded through the Apple Store or iOS devices from any Google Play or Android. Please call my office for any additional information that you may have as it relates to this, and I've been, and I may be reached at two-two-nine-five-four-four-three. And of course, you may continue to follow me on social media portals, on Facebook or Twitter, or you may email me at lasvegasnevada.gov/wardfive, or just contact my office directly at two-two-nine-five-four-four-three. And I would like to take this opportunity also, Mayor and council, to congratulate the mayor, as well as Councilwoman Tarkanian and Councilman Coffin for winning their reelection in the primary. Congratulations to you all, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Councilwoman, you're next.
I guess we need to give congratulations to Councilman Barlow, because he also won, without having to go to a general. I wanted to announce that Ward One is looking for park ambassadors. We do not have enough park ambassadors for Ward One. The duties would include making sure the park is safe, and if there are problems with individuals there, or if there are problems with any of the equipment there, you could call the city, my office, and we would help make sure that someone who could take care of it is involved. And then we would like the park ambassadors to help us in promoting upcoming city events at the park, and to meet and greet the public on days they're able to, to let them know what we have involved, what we have available, and get people using some of these very great parks we have. So if you need any more information, if you want to volunteer as a park ambassador, please call my office at seven oh two-two-nine-two-two-nine-nine. Also, I want to mention the two hundred, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen Neighborhood Partners Fund applicant program. We only have one more day, tomorrow at midnight stops it all, and these are very, very important funds to help neighborhoods who usually don't have very much. NPF provides funding opportunities for residents to generate resolutions to critical neighborhood issues, maybe a certain sidewalk area, maybe a parking situation, maybe a memorial site is needed. The program creates a link between communities and city government, and this year, there's fifty-five thousand dollars available for neighborhood grants for all of the city. There, these five thousand dollar grants are available for projects that address a neighborhood need within the city, to match grant funds with volunteer. You know, you match the funds, but you get paid twenty-two fifty-five per hour if you're driving, if you're working, if you're pulling weeds, whatever, so it's an easy match usually. The only thing is, it has to be completed within the twelve-month fiscal period. I, I just think this is such a grand thing that the city does. We've had computer labs that we've obtained for senior homes. We've had murals that have brightened up the neighborhood. We've had trees and plants planted, we've had neighborhood signs, cleanups. There's such a wide variety of things that residents want, and oftentimes, they can't afford. So if they apply for these grants, and if they want additional help, then we can give that, too, through our offices. But please remember tomorrow night, night is the end, thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you very much. And now we will go down to the end, to Councilman Beers, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Congratulations to the four of you, except we lost Kylton Coffin.
Here's you on the radio.
Interesting and cool program. The State Department up in Carson City of Veterans Services has given the city a grant, and so we're now making available six-month passes to injured or disabled veterans to get involved in our recreational programs that have been customized specifically for them. If you're in that category and would be interested in checking this out, call Bernard Preston here at the city at two-two-nine-four-nine-oh-four. Out in the western edge of town, the summer camp season is underway as well, and registration starts today. Space is limited. Specialty camps for children six to eleven years old, and also for twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds are planned from June eighth to August fourteenth at the Vets Memorial Leisure Services Center, which is halfway between Palo Verde High School and Rogich Middle School. The cost is a hundred and fifty dollars a week, two-two-nine-eleven-hundred, if you're interested. We were doing beers with beers this week at the City of Las Vegas Angel Park, the clubhouse patio bar there at the golf course, five-thirty to seven-thirty-ish. The seven-thirty usually runs a little long once we get going. We get music on the patio this time, live music, that'll be on April twenty-first, a Tuesday night. It is, I guess I have to say, right in the middle of the Rampart sewer construction, so you may want to, certainly you'll have a reason to have a drink once you get there, if, if you get there. But, but please do come out and enjoy the beautiful patio that they have looking over the golf course, and the gardens, and the roses, and the water, it's very nice. Then we'll be doing Coffee with the Councilman Friday, May eighth, seven-thirty to nine o'clock at Dunkin' Donuts, out on the outside of the two fifteen. By the Albertsons, there is a Dunkin' Donuts at Charleston and Desert Foothills, one-one-seven-one-zero-West Charleston Boulevard, for those of you who live and die by your GPS. On this day in music history, April fifteenth, nineteen sixty-six, the Nancy and Frank Sinatra duet, Something Stupid, was number one on the US Singles Chart. That was the first time that we had a father-and-daughter act hit number one. That's all we got, Mayor.
That's great, where'd you get the cover?
John Bear is a man of immense digital resources, we'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, John, that was great, I love visuals. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor.
Where's, wait, where's Councilman Anthony, nothing?
Nothing.
Okay.
All the ward, four people can come to the ward to events I just mentioned.
I was going to ask the councilman, through you, Mayor, of course, are you performing the music at your one event?
No, no, between the construction on Rampart and me performing the music, it would be an audience of one. I would come, just to make you feel good. All right, before I go into my announcements, Mayor, I too wish to congratulate the four incumbents who have succeeded in winning, and wish, would also like to echo your comments to Councilman Anthony Services, Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor, he's served the city in that capacity well, and I appreciate the unanimous support from this council in supporting me for Mayor Pro Tem. First event is, of course, Councilman Anthony started this in regards to identity theft when he got elected, you recall, the shredding events. We are a recipient of that as well. We are having our first, well, not our first, we're having our next shredding event, Saturday, May second, at ten AM to noon at the Centennial Hills Active Adult Center. You see the little free word there on the, on the side, on the right side, it is free. That is sixty-six oh one North Lo Drive, limited to five boxes. It is behind the community center. Oftentimes, people drive in the front parking lot and are looking for someplace to go. But it is in the back, on the library side, off of Deer Springs. So I look forward to people coming out there for that. And on a more serious note, Mayor, our continued partnership with Nevada Child Seekers, we do have a missing young lady, she may, her name is Daniya Segundo. She's sixteen years old, five foot six, one hundred and eighty pounds. She was last seen April first, she does have a birthmark on her right leg. Dani was last seen in the area of Las Vegas Boulevard in Cheyenne. It's not known what she was wearing, but she may be carrying a backpack. Please, if anyone has seen this young lady, let's get her home, or somewhere where she belongs, by contacting the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, seven zero two eight two eight three one one one, or Nevada Child Seekers, seven zero two four five eight seven zero zero nine. Thank you, Mayor, and council members.
Thank you very much. Council, okay, join me Friday, the seventeenth of April, along with our local radio celebrities, as once again we celebrate DJs for PJs. This fantastic public service event provides new pajamas to residents of all ages who are in need. I will be at Coles on West Charleston at eight-thirty AM, but you can drop off your pajama donations through the day at Coles, locations throughout the valley. On Saturday, April twenty-fifth, join me at Kellogg's Air Park for our annual Mayor's Healthy Walk. It's a great time to bring the stroller to the children, the dogs, and neighbors, and share in the community spirit. Get your legs moving and your heart pumping as we come together to enjoy spectacular city park and our fabulous Las Vegas weather. Finally, for all of you dog lovers like me out there, and I have six grand dogs, join me at the Orleans Hotel on Sunday, the twenty-sixth, for the Animal Foundation's Best in Show Event. This annual gathering brings together pets and pet lovers from across the valley for a great cause at a great time. This is a one-of-a-kind dog show featuring fifty sheltered dogs competing for the coveted Best in Show Award. All the dogs are then available for auction after the show at two-thirty PM, so join us at the Orleans for this fun-filled, family-friendly event. And our next city council meeting will be held on Wednesday, May sixth, beginning at nine AM here in city council. And too, I do congratulate my colleagues on their reelection in the primary, and look forward to the coming years together, continuing to build out our great city. And we thank you all, and thank you, staff, and in back, my goodness, what you did to Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem's beautiful background for your things.
Yeah.
I mean, Councilman Barlow and Councilman Beers always have these beautiful pictures, but now you've put him in a new lane. Goodness, and so council, I mean, you and I and Councilman Coffin have to get, a little get better. We've got to get with the times. And staff, thank you very, very much, appreciate it, and clerk's office, and here, and our wonderful planning department, thank you. And our marshals, are they still here with us?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, way in the corner, I saw you holding up that corner, I'm so glad. Have to call on our building department to make sure it's safe. Thank you all, we'll see you in May.